Thank you very much.
With those representing Fire Prevention Week, please make your way forward. Whereas Citrus County, Florida is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Citrus County, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, and explode, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries, and whereas residents should follow three key calls to action, buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires, and whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand charges without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion, and whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community, and whereas Citrus County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach, and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using charging and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, the Board of Founding Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby proclaim the week of October the 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Week Fire Prevention Week in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 23rd day of September, 2025.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Semick, Fire Marshal, Citrus County Fire Rescue. As part of Fire Prevention Week, I'd like to take a quick moment to talk about something that's in many of our homes, like we were talking about, the lithium ion batteries. They're in our phones, in our laptops, e-bikes, and many other devices. They're convenient, but we can make them safer. Just always use the charger that comes with your device. Always keep them unplugged if you're not home. If you notice any swelling or damage, please recycle them appropriately. Don't just throw them in the garbage. And buy only UL-listed products. Locally, we did have a fire during one of our hurricanes from an e-bike battery that got saltwater intrusion, and it started a structured fire from that. So it wasn't unplugged, and it wasn't properly stored. With these simple precautions, we can keep our homes safer and prevent unnecessary risks. Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda today are, we have three presentations. The first one is a presentation on Tourism Strategic Plan. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. All right. It's good to be here this afternoon in front of you all. Just wanted to talk about where we are, what our plans are, our strategic plan for tourism through the next five years. Really excited to show you all that. In your packets, you should have a complete printout of the actual plan, and if you need some other copies, I can be sure to get that to you via emails, and things of that nature. I'll let you do it, I guess. Yeah. Okay, cool. Awesome. All right. Next slide. All right. So, you know, we have the fun job, of course, and this is some of the team here, and we're going, this is at one of our partners in tourism meetings that we have throughout the county. We do those monthly, and some of you all have been to our meetings and everything. Next slide. Thanks, appreciate it. All right. So why tourism matters, tourism economic development is economic development. Job creation over 4,500, excuse me, over 4,500 jobs. Visitor spend for '24 was at a record high of $526 million. Total tax revenue was $62 million, and resident household savings per year, and this is per household, of course, is $898 a year, that the tax dollars, that the monies that visitors who bring, that bring into our community, what our residents will be each save per household. A pretty staggering number statewide. It goes all the way up to over $1,900, and you know, we're right there tucked in the middle, and you know, for our size and the destination of ours from a leisure standpoint, I'm pretty proud of that number, and I believe that our residents are pretty proud of that number as well. Anytime we can save the tax dollars, or taxes for our local residents, for sure. All right, next slide. All right. So we have an outlook for the next year. You know, this has been about, I don't know, 19, 20 months since I've been in the position, and it's been an amazing ride so far, and we have a great team. They're doing great. You know, I can't thank Mr. Howard and administration enough for all the support that they've given our department and the VCB there, and of course, the TDC as well. I can't thank them enough for their support. But what you will see for the next, for '25, '26, our Partners in Tourism program will continue to thrive. We've hosted over 15 county-wide hosted events, and we're counting, of course. We're going to increase our total tourism tax collections with GOVOS. Thank you. A couple weeks ago, you approved that services. That's something that's been long overdue, to make sure we are getting our collections from the short-term rentals throughout the entire county, and to identify not only who's paying, who's not paying, but most importantly, where these owners are from. Are they living out of state? Are they living out of the country? And that's something that we should know, and we'll have that information, that data. So it'd be kind of good to have that in-house as well. We are expecting an increase to our budget because of that. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what it's about for me. It's about leaving a legacy and increasing our budget. That's the number one, and number two, probably one A and one B. We also want to creating, we're creating the best team of tourism professionals in the state, in the entire state of Florida. Operations, research, analytics, content professionals, experienced specialists. We're expanding our operations. The goal is for Saturdays, because tourism doesn't close. Again, many of you have seen me out. I want to say sometimes in the morning on one day, and at nine or 10 o'clock at night on the same day. So it just, it is what it is. I don't complain about it. I actually enjoy not thriving in that environment. The team, it thrives in that environment as well. We try to maintain the work-life balance, but you know, we have a lot of perks with our jobs, so it kind of comes with the territory. So we're excited to continue to move that forward. Also, giving more dollars back to our partners and stakeholders and organizations. New grant program. You know, we felt that the grant program was, it was lacking a little bit in certain areas, from a timeliness standpoint of when it was offered to our partners and our business community and nonprofits, and how much of the money that we were giving out. So we have doubled a lot of those funds. We have increased the opportunities to twice a year now, and that'd be out pretty soon. So that's really good. So you guys have that new grant proposal in the coming BLCC as well. So no pressure. I need you guys to pass that along for me. Appreciate that. All right, please. So let's get on to the strategic plan. We had a great journey. I want to thank you all, and many all in this room, because this was a community-led leaders initiative. We didn't want to make it a TDC initiative. We didn't want to make it a staffing initiative. We wanted to hear all the voices from the community. So we started off in November of '24 with our consultant we hired. We went on to December, of course, with our consultant site visit. You know, on that site visit, you know, a lot was done when they came into the market. Of course, we went on to our community leader surveys in January '25, our strategic plan retreat in May of '25, and our final plan was drafted in August of '25. So very proud of that and how it went. We haven't had a really strategic plan from a tourism standpoint, roughly 17, 18-ish. So it's long overdue, and it was time coming. Please. Listening to our stakeholders. We distributed over 400 surveys. 105 surveys were completed. To be honest with you, to get a 25% completion rate, I'll take that. This survey, for those who saw it, it was extensive. It wasn't a 10-minute thing. You had to take some time with it, and that was intentional the way we, the way we wanted to perform that. So also, who were involved in that survey, county elected officials, city elected officials, county and city staff leaders, community leaders, tourism business leaders, the chamber, sectors, healthcare, banking, retail, education, tourism, real estate, and others. We wanted to make sure we looked under every single rock, and we're very pleased with the results of the survey, because it highlighted what was important in those initiatives in regards how we should go about doing things for the next five years. This is going to give us a good roadmap to, you know, put us on a path of success and sustainability. Next slide. So strategic direction. It's broken down into three variables, three metrics, I should say, marketing and sales, and public relations, the visitor experience, and then that A word, advocacy. You know, over the last decade, tourism has changed. The dynamics have changed as far as what's important. Granted, we are funded through hotel tax and collections and things of that nature, but tourism has been asked, and I accept that challenge, to become more of a community advocate, and I think that's important as well. So we're going to continue to do that and do some more things in the community. So in these marketing and sales, public relations, and I won't dive into each of them individually, but that's the direction of that as well. Please. Now, with the strategic initiatives, we broke them down into three initiatives, and that's what we're going to focus on as a TDC. You know, their primary responsibility is visionary. I'm sure you guys, BLCC feels the same way as a visionary standpoint. You know, I'm more of a kind of day-to-day thing, and you know, I try to steer some visionary thoughts, because that's just how I'm wired. But at the end of the day, our time here is short. And I don't mean like my position or your positions, but our time is short here. So we have to make the most of it, and at the end of the day, it's all about leaving a legacy, legacy projects. That's the number one goal for us. Every day we come into the office is, what kind of legacy are we leaving? And we all tag-team that in the office on a daily matter, and our business partners are doing the same thing. Now, with the strategic initiatives, we want to build brand recognition of our unique coastal destination. Now, the external marketing, you know, that produces, of course, overnight sustainability and economic year-round travel. We also want to build it in-market as well, with in-market promotions with our visitors, which, excuse me, with our visitors, and most importantly, our residents. Yes, you will see residents highlighted a lot in our strategic plan for tourism, because building awareness of the impact of travel with the citizens and elected officials within the county is an important thing for us to consider. Also, the second initiative is an ever-changing, improving year-round visitor experience. You know, we have a lot of highs and lows here, you know, scalloping season and manatee season, but it was a, the survey was very focused, and it came out to us that we really need to focus on the shoulder seasons of everything. That's really important, because we want to kind of level out that and take some of the pressures off of some of our high-impact areas, Kings Bay, and the waterways and things of the nature, and kind of spread some more visitation through Floral City, Inverness areas. Now, the growing La Canto Hernando as well, and even Homasasa as well. Even though we have some waterways, you know, a lot of crowding in some of those areas, and even Crystal River, we want to make sure that, you know, in some of the seasons, as far as the shoulder seasons, that we're our programming, and we're highlighting that in advertising to those things. I think the businesses will like that, because you know, the peaks and the valleys, when it's been super high is great, but when it's super low, it's like, eh. So we want to kind of even out that curve a little bit. Please. All right. And the third initiative is sustainability, for the most part. We want to do, we want to make sure everything that we're doing is sustainable. You know, we've looked at several things to diverse the marketplace outside of just the manatees and stuff like that. Of course, fishing, scalloping is great, but we want to get into sports, niche sports tourism, trails and things of that nature, and we do have that capability of doing that. So we're going to be doing things to move more monies to do things quicker. You know, we talked about GOVOS, short-term rentals. We're now investigating a program called a Tourism Improvement District, which is a TID, which is something else that we can do to quickly bring about some brick and mortar and some new development to the area, to the county, in other parts of the county, which is needed. Next slide, please. So overall, you know, tourism is, is not just visitors. It's an investment into our community's economy, culture, and most importantly, the future. This was a fun event. This is when we were kind of crowned and got our designation as the manatee capital of the world, and I'm pretty boisterous at times. I'm in the front here screaming, you know, and hands up, mouth wide open, but we had a good time. Next slide, please. Yeah, that's the end of the presentation. Again, I didn't want to take up too much time, but I'm here for questions. You know, I know the importance of what tourism is for us. You know, the more dollars you pump into this thing, the bigger and the larger our local economy tax base will be, and that's what it's all about at the end of the day, I believe. You know, I'm biased. So I'm gonna keep doing this until somebody tells me I can't do it anymore, and I don't think I'm gonna ever be told that. So, any questions?
Avos, great presentation. As someone that chaired the tourism for four years between 2010 and 2014, I can tell you, at one point in time, I thought our tourism was off-track. I will tell you that I'm very proud of the work that you have done as the Director of Tourism. I think you've done an outstanding job. I love the direction that you're taking it and the work that you're doing, and I think it's absolutely, I'll share just a brief comment with you that I kind of chuckle about, because during that time in '10 to '14, I think our revenues are, what, three and a half million, four million now? In 2010, our revenues were $500,000. And I can remember standing at a mullet toss with one of the individuals in Homasasa, and he said, Rebecca, he goes, I can remember the day when we were begging for tourism, and when we looked out across the river with the mullet toss and the number of people that were in Homasasa, and what it did for the economy, he said, you know, it's, you can't balance it out. You know, we asked for it, we got it. You know, sometimes it's a little overwhelming, but I can't imagine taking it away, because it's what has made our economy. It's how we have survived. And so I know it comes with great challenges, but I will say that for those that are watching, it supplements our income or our investments back into our community by, on average, about 25%. So it does its job. It has a place, and I can tell you that looking across the United States in some places that have decided they didn't want to fund tourism at a state level, it's really hurt their economy. And I know that our state, Visit Florida, came under a great amount of challenge for a number of years, when Dana Young, a former senator, took over and was head of Visit Florida. There was lots of talk about defunding it, and it's finally, it's found its place back and has found its role, and I think it's working from the state level to the local level, and I just want to applaud you for the work that you've done.
Thank you. We're listening. It's not just me. It's the whole team.
Well, your team.
Yeah, it's, we're listening. We hear the residents. We hear when they have issues, when they have concerns, and we're listening. And I think that's, it speaks into the strategic plan. So we are listening. It's not perfect, but I think it's a good thing. I mean, technically, we're what, the number two industry for the entire county, behind healthcare, which has over 8,000 jobs. And in some markets in the county, we're actually number one, you know, when you kind of sector it out. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a delicate balance of, you know, resident, the local businesses, you know, just making sure we don't infringe, but also provide opportunities for our workforce and things of that nature, which is one of the things I'm most excited about the most, is we're going to be developing something, or get behind an advocacy program for our service and hospitality professionals, so we can, you know, get them more educated, get them more involved, and things of the nature, you know, possibly even increasing their funding from a standpoint, because at the end of the day, it's about jobs for us. And I think, you know, when we're doing it the right way, we know it's when jobs are increasing, the businesses are happy, even though in a down economy, you know, we're getting there. So one day at a time.
Well, I want to add on, because I love homegrown tomatoes, and when I say that, I say it affectionately with mom and pop businesses. You know, that's, that to me is American pie, and that is exactly what I think tourism in our county supports. It's all the local businesses, and I think that we saw some impacts of losing some hotel rooms during the last storms with the plantation, and I think it hurt those businesses. So I think that's a good lesson that we can take away from this, and that's how we can get behind this and support it, and I think that it plugs right in with local business owners. And I'm not trying to take anything away from box stores or big brand names, but I'm, I love when, when local people want to come in and make an investment, I want to do everything that we can do to continue to support them.
Thank you. And one quick note, and I'll end with this. I can't remember if I emailed you all, the new Visit Florida campaign. They're doing a refresher, rebranding, and it's called Floridays. So Floridays, a playoff of holidays. They are in a partnership with Margaritaville and Jimmy Buffett, and they have a whole new commercial and everything. And we're right, we actually end the commercial with our destination. So they chose us as that, and you know, it's going to be seen by a lot. And the goal of that Floridays is, they want to take the focus off of the South Beach and the Disney. Everybody knows about that. They really want to kind of get some more eyes on the small-town tourism, smaller destinations that still have a big punch to them as well. So super excited that Florida, Visit Florida, and Governor DeSantis has seen us important enough to build on their program and to include us in their new branding and their promotion. So really excited about that. But I can't remember if I emailed that out to you. If not, if not, I'll email you guys the link to see that new commercial.
Oh, wow.
It's a little, it's a nice jingle. So it's kind of like that, you know, that, oh, oh, O'Reilly's. I'm sorry. I'm a jingle, I'm a jingle guy. But anyway, it has a nice jingle to it, so I can't wait to email that out to you. I'll get it out to you tomorrow.
Madam Chair.
Awesome.
Commissioner Davis?
I love absolutely everything you said, and count me in on the big-box stores are all well and good to have, but give me a small, local business any day. So, so I want, first of all, I'm very grateful that you see that the Tourism Board is going in the right direction. I'm finishing my fourth year as Chair, and I got to tell you, Mr. Cole, night and day difference between Avos and the prior director. So for starters, the very first thing I believe I told you is, I reiterated, the board has said this over and over again, is to please make sure and spread the love throughout the county. And we know that because its name, Discover Crystal River, that Crystal River gets the lion's share of the attention, but we have so many other wonderful things to advertise. And I always felt like we were getting lip service from the staff prior, and the, and leadership falls from the top, right, or comes from the top. You have absolutely delivered on that, so you need to give a shout-out to The Cove for being on TV.
Oh, yeah.
Because, and what was the other thing that they were in Southern Living, like best?
The, they were the most hidden, the best hidden gem in the country. So
Yeah.
The Cove, I feel like Luann and her team, the, out of Inverness, they've been on the, they were just on another live segment from Orlando, so they stay out in the media now. So I'm very happy for them.
And it's definitely a team effort. It's not all VCB that's bringing it to The Cove, but we have been really, really putting a lot of effort into Floral City and Inverness and Homasasa and other attractions there. I also, you mentioned hospitality. You know, a very well-trained hospitality professional can actually make some pretty good money. I found out that one of the head waitress, waiters at one of the better restaurants in the county was, I think, one year out of high school and making $70,000, because they just knew how to really serve the clientele. And so we've had multiple discussions with, at the board level, with TDC Board, and working with WTC to create an entire hospitality program. Their big holdup is, of course, lack of funding.
Right.
They would want to do it, but they need teachers and they need funding to do it. So that's something that we've been talking about for, gosh, a couple of years now at least.
Now, with that, that survey you mentioned, that $70,000, you know, that's something my staff was not really happy about. So, Steve, so we gotta, you know, make sure, no, I'm joking.
The, and make no mistake, that tourism is interwoven in the fabric of this community. There are so many other businesses that work, mine included, with tourism companies. When they go down, the rest of the economy here goes down. So not to mention the whole $900 a month, or $900 a year annual savings for a household versus in the, the scary thing that the legislature was talking about doing last year, which was turn all the tourism money into a savings on your ad verum taxes that would have amounted to $20, $20 a year versus 900. So the economy is a very multifaceted, complex thing, and make no mistake, all of those things are connected. One last point. You ain't seen nothing yet, Madam Chair. Wait till you see what he's cooking up when Avos and I went to Seminole County and saw what they're doing. So you got big things coming for capital projects, which is what we all want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Canard.
Yes, thank you. Avos, I'll just take this moment to publicly give you props, the numerous times that seems you and I run into each other out in public. It's always at a restaurant, mind you, but you're always pitching Citrus County. You know, if it's lunch out at waterfront with a table full of people, or out at a restaurant for dinner, some other place, whether you're sitting there with one or two people, or a whole group of people, you're there pitching Citrus County. And, you know, I could be there in my, in my street clothes, and it's, oh, let me introduce you to one of our commissioners here. Anyway, I do appreciate the effort you put in. You are all in. For the people watching at home or here in the audience, I'm telling you, this man is pitching Citrus County all the time. It seems 24/7. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you, Avos. Everyone said so much, but I know you're doing a great job, and echo what the others have said.
Thank you so much.
Nice presentation. Thank you for putting that together, friends.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to H2, Presentation. Trish Thomas is going to give the Sales Tax Community Input Presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am here on behalf of the Sales Tax Steering Committee that was created in reaction to the request from your commission, the first part of this year, wanting to know what the public thought about the possibility of a local option sales tax. So the county commission, I guess I'm going to need to tell you. Okay, I think we can move on. The county commission wanted to know what the public might think about that type of tax, and the county, and the County Chamber of Commerce volunteered to facilitate a steering committee to work on getting that kind of information. During this whole process, the chamber did not advocate either for or against the sales tax. We were neutral, making the presentation in reference to the materials that we need, we felt were needed to be there. And let me stop right here. Don Taylor was the chair of the Steering Committee. He, kudos to Don for what he did in setting up this entire, this entire process. He worked on setting up the, working with the Steering Committee to set up the meeting locations, to set up the presentations. That was just the beginning. After that, he worked on putting together all the results from the surveys and providing that information that is contained in this report today. So kudos to Don. He would be here. I think this, this presentation was originally scheduled two weeks ago when he was going to be here, but I think he's out of town now, so that's why you have me in his place. Next. The timeline, again, in March, you request, we organized the Town Hall meetings. Steering Committee was formed. There were 23 members, 15 of whom were recommended by you Commissioners. We held Town Halls, two committee meetings, drafted the presentation again, under the leadership of Don, and then finalized the dates and locations. Next. We had four meetings throughout the county, and we want to thank the folks who allowed us to use their facilities to hold these events. The first one was in June, June 9th, at the Central Citrus Community Center. We had 62 attendance. June 12th was at the Redemption Point Assembly of God Church in Inverness, where 30 people attended. June 19th was at Stillwater Preserve in Homasasa, and we had 44 people attended. And final meeting was Citrus Springs Community Center, where 31 people attended. So as you can see, if you add them up real quick, we had a total of 167 attendees at these meetings. The survey statistics that were created, during the time that we had the Town Hall meetings, the in-person surveys responses totaled 90. And after we had the meetings, we, it was determined that we needed maybe to do an online survey, and from the online survey, there were 419 responses, for a total of 509 total responses. Okay. During the Town Hall meetings and for the, um, online survey, it was almost like a ballot, questions were asked. The first one being, would you consider voting for a local option sales tax? And then if the answer was yes, how much do you feel it should be, how do you feel it should be levied? How long should it last? And what do you think it should be used for? And then finally, if you're undecided or opposed, what would be your primary concerns? The survey results indicated that 59.1% indicated a willingness to vote for a local option sales tax. There were twen- 13%, almost 13% that were undecided, and a no vote of 29%. Next. The local option sales tax surveys, um, the questions were, if it was to implement a 1% sales tax, how long do you believe that it should be in place? And as you can see from this graph here, the, the, um, answer that seemed to be the most appropriate or popular was 10 years. And that 10-year period of time is a time that's appropriate from a standpoint of being able to take the money and bond the money for projects that we can use, um, capital projects. And let me go back, um, some of the things that we indicated in our, um, meetings were, um, we're the only county in the state that doesn't have a local option sales tax. Collier County did have one, but they, um, their, their tax was set out to where it had a certain amount of money that needed to be raised, and once it was raised, two years before it was supposed to, they, they, um, did, they quit collecting that. So at this point, we're the only county that does not have a sales tax, and we're the only county that has never had one. The sales tax is only on items, it only goes, um, on, it will not include items like medication, groceries, prescriptions, the things that already the 6% sales tax does not tax, those are the same exemptions for the 1 cent sales tax. It's estimated that about $25 million a year would be collected with this penny sales tax, and that 25% of this would be paid by tourists. And finally, it's a determination that is going to be, if it's placed on the ballot by referendum by the commission, it's a vote that'll be made by the county, by the county voters to determine if that's what they're indicated, interested in. The next question is, what should the money be used for? And under the, the Florida statutes, it has to specifically indicate what the money is to be used for. And as you can see by this slide, um, the big, the, the most popular item is paving of roads, followed by widening of roads and stormwater drainage. So that's a big concern for the local residents who responded to the surveys. And then you can see the other ones that are set out there. It's hard to see where. The, um, results, and this was, um, information that was collected as far as it wasn't simply yes, no, how many years, that sort of thing. These were some concerns that people had when they filled out the survey. Their biggest concern was government concerns. Next was affordability, development concerns, and there were some general comments, and then there was some support for the 1% and support for roads, and then special items. Under the issues of government concerns, 39% of the people were concerned about transparency. In other words, what was the money going to be used for? The people did not want a blank check to be, uh, given to, quite frankly, the county commission to use it for any purpose whatsoever. The way the statute's set up, uh, the Florida statute is set up, the money has to be specifically indicated in the referendum what the money is intended to be used for. Um, so that helps with some of the concerns, I think. Without controls, nothing would be, nothing to keep the budgets from moving money around. That's an issue that, um, I think that if it's specifically indicated what the money is used for in the referendum, that's what it's expected to be used for. And there are concerns that the money would be used for something other than roads, assuming that roads was what the money and the 1% sales tax was set up for. Another concern is, um, to have an agenda item every three months to see how the money is being spent in the previous months, um, to make sure that the money's being spent as allocated in the referendum, and have a Citizens Committee to oversee how funds are being used. In reviewing some of the referendums from some of the counties here in the state, um, contained within the ordinance that prepares the information for the referendum, there have been at least two or three counties that I saw that actually contained a Citizens Committee, uh, within that, uh, ordinance. So that's something that could be indicated to them. The next issue is affordability. Um, it's too much for people who are on fixed incomes. Again, I want to indicate that it's, there's a $5,000 cap on the 1% sales tax on any large purchase. So only the first $5,000 is going to be ta- is going to be taxed. And again, there's no tax on groceries, prescriptions, and medicines. Other concerns included that the sales tax are regressive and hurt the poor more. Uh, people would, said they would indicate they would vote for the 1% if the county lowered property taxes. Um, there was concern about maybe a half a cent as opposed to 1%. And they wanted to get rid of the gas tax if this tax is implemented. Development concerns are that, um, the new businesses that are coming into the county should pay for what, uh, they need. With the, all the development in the county, uh, people did not see the need for additional sales tax. And they figured that, um, raising the impact fees should cover all future needed expenses. And of course, y'all know that impact fees are for future expansion, not resurfacing roads that need it now. And a concern that, um, we were going to be writing, uh, facility, providing things for developers that are coming in here and that they wouldn't be paying their fair share. Some general comments are the, and this is positive, 1% could be used, um, for bonding purposes, uh, to have the money available currently to provide for some of the things that, um, would be used, money would be used for. There was a thought that perhaps an income goal should be set, and that when that income was arrived at, that the, um, goal, and the goal was met, that the tax would go away. And several of them favored a link to make it, to in fact make it bondable, which, like I say, figures about 10%, 10 years is the appropriate amount of time for that. Continuing with other general comments, there was a tax for tourists rather than residents, but as indicated previously, the estimates are that, um, these taxes will be paid, 25% of the taxes will be paid by tourists. Thank you, wherever you are, if you're still here. Some people thought that perhaps five years was an appropriate time limit, not 10 years. And, um, adding away to tax the tourists is appropriate for our county. And next, support. They believe that, some people believe that the homeowners should not carry the total burden, um, with sales tax, everybody pays a little bit, um, and developments need to peri- pay the cost of infrastructure. They don't believe that sales tax should be used to replace property taxes. And they favor 1%, they favor the 1% if the sunset clause, sunset clause is defined. Next, the, um, 6.7% were in support of roads. You surely, we all know that, um, there's a big need in resurfacing and repaving of existing roads, um, that, uh, some of these, some of these sources of income are insufficient at this time to provide those monies, to provide that. And there was a feeling, um, as you saw in the previous slides, that, um, the roads were the big issue that everybody felt should be addressed by the 1 cent sales tax. And then, um, in that same graph, a little farther up, uh, there was concern for the animal shelter, for conservation corridors, and protecting, perfect, protecting conservation lands, which of course, with everything else, the cost only goes higher and higher each Next. And, um, as seen by this report, the next steps are, um, to present this information to you, the county commission. You determine where we go next. If there's a ordinance that maybe that can be addressed in October. In November of this year, the information needs to be submitted to the Office of Program Policy Analysis and Government Accountability in Tallahassee, which the short for that one is OPAGA. Um, and then after they, they do a performance audit, after it's returned to our county, the information is submitted to the supervisor of elections, and then the voters determine whether or not they want to pass the referendum. If they pass the referendum, um, on, in November, the notification would go to the Department of Revenue, and the taxes would then commence in, in January of 2017.
Twenty-seven.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-seven.
What did I say? Seventeen?
Seventeen.
I'm just a decade behind. Twenty-twenty-seven. Time is marching forward too fast. Okay, I thank you for, um, the, for the ability to make this presentation to you. If there's any questions that I might be able to answer, I'd be glad to do that. Commissioner Finnegan?
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you're well-versed in this, I don't remember, is it a 60% vote that gets us there?
No, it's, it's a simple majority, 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I'd like to thank you for all the work that you and the committee have done, and you brought forward some good ideas, and one of them that you didn't say was, if you drive an electric car and you have to pay a 1 cent sales tax on what you purchase, you are now helping to fix the roads that you're driving on, which right now you're not.
Thank you.
So I mean, that, that is a win-win situation for the county to be collecting money on electric car drivers without going out there and, and doing something above and beyond. But I think this is, you know, this is really nice that people actually gave you positive feedback on what needs to be done and how they would like to see it done. One single item, one single referendum, I'm not into a 10-year, but if that's what the people wanted, then 10 years would be a relatively good thing, because we need at least 40 thou- 40 million a year to get our roads up to where they need to be. And if we can get 25 million just from a tax, and I know people out there, you go shopping in Brooksville, you also go shopping in Ocala, you are already paying that penny. So when you say that it's going to be a hardship for the taxpayers, I was just up in Gainesville, and it wasn't 6%, 7%, but it was 8% up there. So the thing is, I feel that if we went from the 6th to the 7th, this would be a positive thing for our county, and I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Canard?
Just a quick thank you, and thank you to Don for organizing this entire undertaking and the committee for being involved. So thank you very much. Good information.
Well, I was going to say, truly, the person who, who needs to be thanked is Don Taylor.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you. Ford, um, I think what I would like to suggest is that, uh, this gets on our next agenda so that we can have a discussion and see if we're going to move forward with it. So if you are in agreement with that, um, I would like to have it brought back to the next agenda.
Madam Chair, uh, I think that we need to, not necessarily today, uh, but we need to look at the timelines here and find out, um, if we're looking at, at putting this, putting this on the, uh, 26th general election ballot, we're gonna, we're gonna start running up against some deadlines pretty quickly. If we use the next meeting as a discussion period, then maybe decide to set a, a time and, and date for, um, what is it, voting on it? Would that, that would be another 30-day window, uh, before that would go out? What does that, what does that look like? Ms. Lynn?
I gave you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, uh, I think you're in good, you're in good shape for your timeline. Uh, if you have the meeting, uh, if you have it on your next meeting, we can get direction for, uh, the use, some findings from you and, um, a timeline, how long you want the cert tax to be in place. Uh, if we get that information, we can have, uh, um, an ordinance for your next meeting, where we will advertise it for a public hearing at the following meeting. So I, I think you're, I think we got it.
So we would actually, if we, if we start with a discussion about it in the next meeting, the earliest that we would be voting, could be voting on an ordinance would be, what, the first, first meeting in December?
November. November. So, uh, that would be the 14th, you would, uh, give your direction, we would bring back the, um, ordinance for publication at, on the 20, at the 28th or the 21st, excuse me, I'm sorry, the 7th, and then the 21st, and then you would hear it your first meeting in November.
Okay. All right.
Is Veronica, Veronica, is that? Veronica shaking her head yes, that, that means.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I'm curious, do we have that North Florida Land Trust timeline handy? Cause they have that, they have an 85% success rate on getting these passed.
I don't have that on me, but I could, I have that, we could, I don't, anybody, if a staff member has that, I don't know, Veronica, I don't think we have that, but we can follow up.
Cause what they had suggested was, um, at no cost to county taxpayers, is doing a, another survey, as I like to say, measure twice and cut once, um, and that's run by a group that actually does, this is all they do. And, um, then we're not allowed to advocate, nor should we advocate as government, um, but outside entities can gather opinions as to what residents want, and then go from there in terms of getting it passed. So that's what North Florida Land Trust, I mean, I, I, I don't want to see the overdevelopment either, there's only a certain number of things that we, tools that we have in our toolbox, and, um, they'll handle it for us. If, if the answer, when they do the survey, if the answer is, one of, one of the answers is land preservation. And I've been told ever since becoming a Commissioner that you got to have at least two things on the tax for people to find something they love. So me personally, as a resident, I would like to see the lion's share go towards exactly what the survey said, which is roads and infrastructure, and some portion towards land preservation. But that's just, that's resident Davis, not Commissioner Davis speaking. So, um, we do what the community says they want in this, especially in this particular situation. So can we get that timeline? Cause it is pretty critical at this point.
Yeah, we can, we can reach out, um, and, and get that.
And, and from what I also understand is that the, the language, if it does go to the ballot, the language is incredibly important on people understanding that they're gated funds, they're, and very, very clear on what the sunset is, whether it's an amount or a year, and what it's going for. Incredibly important on the success or failure of it. And to Commissioner Barrett's point, she's absolutely right. We help pay all, we help pay for things in every other county that we visit, they need to return the favor when they come back here, um, when they come to, to our home. Also, I think, um, the only thing that, um, I didn't hear, great job, Judge Thomas. The only thing I didn't hear is I believe it's a $5,000 purchase price limit on the 1 cent. So if you go, did you say 5,000?
Yes.
I was listening to every word. How did I miss that?
Which caught the 2017.
So, that was not me, that was not me. So it's, so the maximum of the 1 cent is $50, so, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett?
Um, I listened to what Commissioner Davis had to state, and I don't think we should muddy the waters at this point. We need to have our discussion next time we meet, but if we're going to collect approximately 25 million for roads, that will leave some budget money for us to do land trust, not using tax, you know, the, the 1 cent sales tax. But that, I think we need to talk about at our next meeting, because at this point, I think we just need to focus on, yeah, we want to come up with something to do a 1 cent sales tax, and when we get together in two weeks, then decide, because at this point, a land trust can be paid for with regular tax dollars.
At the next meeting, I do believe that we've had some conversation or acknowledgement that typically when you do this, you share a portion of that pie with municipalities and the school. If that's the case, then I would like to have those numbers, um, statutorily, what is required, um, to, so we can have those numbers, know what the calculations look like, that dollar. to, so we can have those numbers, know what the calculations look like, that dollar amount. Again, I'm not here to debate this, but the one thing that I feel very passionate about is grant matches. We are leaving 50 cents on the table every day that we don't set aside monies for grant match. That means whether it's utilities, anything that we can go out and acquire a grant for, we have to have a match. Most of it is a 50%. So I think the more that we can, if there's some place that we want to be able to set that aside, I don't know if this is the place for it, but I do think somewhere in our budget going forward, I know that we're putting it in there this year in this budget, but we've really got to get serious about grant match. And I think, did you have something?
I just, so in preparation, I know that I had sent you some information, Chairman, but I did hear Judge Thomas spoke about the citizen group. So if you guys can be thinking about that, is that something that you want to include? Because we'll have to include that in the ordinance language. So we need findings, we need timeline, length of time, purpose, and then if you want the citizen group, be thinking about that and the couple of things that have just been mentioned.
Okay. Commissioner Barrett?
I just wanted to remind the board that last time this went before the people, it was blown away down because it said fixing the roads and other things. And that's what the problem was. It wasn't one specific item. And unless we focus on what the people that came up with decided, one item, one time, one amount, you know, it's going to get blown away again and we will never get our residential roads fixed. So we need to really focus on what the people, you know, we asked them to go out and find people and see what they really wanted. They want one item. And that's why I'm saying, if we get the one item and we're fortunate enough to get one item from the citizens, there will be other dollars available for other items. Okay? So I'm just saying, we need to focus on one thing.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan?
Just for next meeting, if we could get the number maybe from Tammy, what the accumulative total for the stormwater fee is? And the only reason I say that, I agree with the other commissioners that the wording, you're right, has to be so important. And I hear roads and I hear land conservation, I like all of it. But I know that people with the distrust, and we saw a small group come out, usually a small group that comes out, I would say, are very engaged. When the 2026 election comes in November, everybody's coming out, well, not everyone, but, you know, many, many more people, and they more easily say no to things than yes. So if there was a way to, in the language, and I don't know if stormwater could go along with roads, to say, we're collecting this, but you're going to save this money in your taxes. Because I think, I saw the biggest thing up there is the government distrust, right? And I understand that. We're going to give more money, are they still just going to shift, you know, certain monies around and not put it? So people really have that fear. But if we tied it in and said, nope, this is the $100 on your taxes that you can see fall off to save you, maybe that gets us there, maybe it doesn't. Whatever this board comes up with in the next couple of weeks, the next month, I have always believed that it should go to the voters. So whatever this board comes up with collectively, I would be in agreement to see it on the ballot, just because I think that gives everyone the opportunity to say yes or no. Thank you.
Go ahead. Commissioner Kennard?
Well, I've got a lot of thoughts on this. I am, right now, I am in the camp that I'm going to support putting this on the ballot, depending on where we land, on what the money will be spent on. Because this group went out and put a lot of effort into finding out what people want. And the plan was, the idea going into this, was that this needed to be citizen-driven, not county-commission-driven. And what we saw was 32% of the people that participated had road resurfacing as their primary use for this money. That means 68% had something else as their primary use. So I don't think that it would be appropriate for this board to say, we're going to side with the 32% and put everything there. I will also remind this board that there is four tenths of a mil in our millage rate right now that was put in there specifically for road resurfacing. It was supposed to have increased two tenths of a mil for five years to get us to one mil that at that time we were told was going to cover our road resurfacing needs. I had said at that time, and I will stand by it, that ultimately, if a one-cent sales tax passes, I am going to advocate for that four tenths of a mil to be pulled out of the millage rate. So that needs to come off ultimately if this passes. So there will be a millage rate, even if stormwater doesn't come into play, there will be, I believe, a millage rate decrease as a direct result. And that's the four tenths of a mil that's already included there. So we'll talk a lot more about it at the next meeting. I'm looking forward to it. There's some good stuff here. The folks participated, they've told us what they're interested in. And ultimately, I think that this board will take what the information that this group has given us, and we create a CIP, a standalone CIP, for this money so that if, when people are going to the polls in '26, they can look and see, these are the roads that will be wide, these are the roads that will be repaved, these are perhaps the stormwater specifics, okay? Not, we're going to put some here and put some here and put some here, but specifics. This is our CIP book specifically for the 1% sales tax. I think that gives them a lot of good information to make an educated decision.
Ms. Lynn, you may know this, is 2014 the last time that this initiative was on the ballot?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrett, you made a statement a moment ago that you said it was for road repair and other.
Mm-hmm.
I'm reading the 2014, there's nothing in here about other, so I don't want to confuse that. It specifically said in the 2014 referendum that was put on the ballot, the cost to resurface all these roads on a 20-year cycle would require an investment of about $13,628,000 per year, or, I'm sorry, $13,628,000 per year. And that historically, investment approximated $3 million annually on road resurfacing. So what they were, this was a 1% transportation SRTAX for just road resurfacing at that time? That's, I'm reading from it right now.
Chair?
Yes.
Did you want to read the question? The question is under, on the second page. That was the actual, what they voted on. If you don't have it, I can read it.
Go ahead.
It's, shall Citrus County fund ongoing maintenance and periodic resurfacing of roads by levying a 1% sales SRTAX from 2015 until 2034, with proceeds to be deposited into a dedicated trust fund shared with the cities of Crystal River and Inverness and restricted for these transportation expenditures? So it was just resurfacing, maintenance and resurfacing.
So in 2016, the county collected 8.363 million in gas tax. In year '25, we collected 8.965 million. And I don't know if Tammy is in here, I had it somewhere, I've put it away. We have some gas tax that is going to sunset, a couple pennies, I believe, and is it 30, is it 32, Tammy?
I think it's 34.
34, okay. So we have some other gas tax that's going to be sunsetting. And then, of course, I am looking at transportation, and I think it's important because I want, when you come back, I want you to be prepared as the citizens to weigh in and have communication with us. But we have just a little over a billion dollars worth of road capacity, infrastructure needs. And we have a $300 million backlog on residential road resurfacing. And then we also need our, we have a 25% match on SCOP, which is our collector road resurfacing. So the state funds it at 75%, but the problem is, they're only putting $1.8 million into that. So that's not going to go far. And so we will technically probably have to come up with more than 25% match on these SCOP road to get those done. So the need is great when it comes to roads, but I want, if this is where the citizens say they want, I want them to have the full story and the full understanding of what we, where we need to go and the amount of dollars. And to put it into perspective, I also ask if, what that looks like in bonding, if we do 10 years with the gas, or with the sales tax, what does that mean for bond? That means we could do about, Tammy, was it 100 million? $107 million over 10 years? If we're supposed to be doing $40 million a year just in road resurfacing, you can do the numbers. I mean, it's not difficult math. So that bond, the sales tax would be the debt service payment and allow us to catch up and get ahead so that we can bond that amount of money and get ahead of the deterioration of our roads and get, and stop the inflation. Because every time we do this, we're adding 3% inflation every year, year over year, to the deferral of the maintenance. I'm going to leave it at that. That's a lot more conversation I really wanted to get into, but when we come back next meeting, I want everybody to be, to have their thoughts together, to be able to address this and to give us your feedback so that we know what direction to go. All right, moving on. The next hearing we have is a public hearing on the ordinance relating to the fertilizer.
Yes, Madam Chair. At the conclusion of the public hearing, you are going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending Chapter 66, Article 2, Division 4, entitled Fertilizer Use in Landscape Maintenance Practices, amending Section 66-95, entitled Definitions, amending Section 66-98, entitled Fertilizer-Free Zones, amending Section 66-100, entitled Fertilizer Content and Application Rates, amending Section 66-101, entitled Application Practices, amending Section 66-103, entitled Exemptions, providing for severability, providing for inclusion into the code, providing for modification that may arise from consideration of public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And Madam Chair, next you would have a public hearing. Hi there.
Hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners James Toye, Intergovernmental Affairs. Here in Citrus County, we often talk about how we can ensure that we are moving our county towards a place where nature and community can thrive. And I believe this ordinance is moving us towards that ultimate vision. This ordinance introduces a number of new regulations to our current regulations surrounding the application of fertilizer here in Citrus County. Kind of from a 10,000-level view, first and foremost, it increases the blackout period for fertilizer applications, specifically that containing nitrogen and phosphorus here in the county. That would now include the dormant months, which is November through March, as well as the rainy months, which is previously not defined in our code ordinances and now is spelled out to include June through September. It also establishes buffers between bodies of water and the application. It would be a 25-foot buffer for fertilizers containing phosphorus and nitrogen from bodies and waters. That's great preservation for our springs, our ecosystem as a whole. It also includes new requirements for slow release of 65% of nitrogen content in fertilizer would now have to be in slow-release form, which we all know is great ecologically, as well as, and this one's interesting, for retailers at the point of sale, they would have to display signage issued by Citrus County. And I think there's some good opportunities with our business community and the Chamber of Commerce here. That spells out our exact fertilizer requirements to ensure that our residents are staying in compliance. Now, as your Intergovernmental Affairs Manager, who largely focuses on state and federal issues, I'm going to be candid with you, I'm not exactly a specialist in local fertilizer law. However, today, we have a special guest who is very well-versed. He is, as they say, subject matter expert in this arena. That is Mr. Michael McGrath with the Sierra Club of Florida. You previously received a presentation from Mr. McGrath on this subject. And at this time, Chair, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to invite him back up to share some more commentary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll start me in brief with this, but, you know, three words really come to mind for me, Michael McGrath with the Sierra Club of Florida, partnerships, collaboration, and also commitment. We had a really great presentation from Visit Crystal River with Mr. Cole, talking about tourism, right, and trying to continue to invest in that. And this is also an opportunity to continue to invest in water quality as well, which is one of our marquee things for Citrus County to keep visitors, to continue to visit on this great region. Another thing around sales tax, right, again, investment on trying to make sure that people spend money here in the county, we can actually make sure that we invest in those new repairs. Another opportunity to invest in that, people are spending their money here in Citrus County when they make their visits as well. Overall, this is a great opportunity, we should all be very proud of. Citrus County could join, could be the 19th county to have a strong urban fertilizer ordinance. And the language that you guys have in your provisions is amongst the strongest, if not the strongest, in the entire state and can really set a leadership tone for how you guys move forward and also how other communities can move forward with trying to manage stormwater to address runoff from our lawns. And I'm just really proud of it. I just want to thank the professionals, Ms. Lynn, and also Mr. Toye as well, and also all of you for having open dialogues, doing your due diligence, research into this topic, and for having open minds and also to make sure that we can do something that really achieves the mutual goals of having good water quality, but also green lawns that are also, you know, of interest for our residents. And really, no one's losing here, this is a win-win opportunity. So again, thank you so much for your partnership, looking forward to future collaborations and looking forward to how we can actually roll this out with, through public education efforts. And I know some of our volunteers from our group, our local venture coast group, wants to have some comments on that. But I think this is really a phenomenal opportunity. So again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. I think this is just a tool in our toolbox. As you said, it's a water quality investment. Many times, we're going to the state and getting funds back for septic-to-sewer conversions. We're asking for water quality money to restore our bays from Crystal River, Ozella, all the way down to Homasasa. And we're working on the lakeside as well. And this, to me, is just, it shows our effort to try to be in compliance with the, what the state is rewarding us with. So thank you for that.
Board?
Okay. All right. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address this agenda item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Devon Corallo, Chair of the Local Adventure Coast Sierra Club Group. First of all, I want to thank you for your proactive efforts. This is really important and I think it's a big step forward, and I'm so pleased to be here, to be part of this. And I want to thank Michael McGrath, our Sierra Club Florida chapter expert, for his efforts to work with you to tweak the ordinance so that it will provide the optimum protection while making it easy for homeowners and commercial applicators to use it. We're pleased to support this amendment to improve water quality in our springs and waterways. For you as Commissioners, this is an easy, low-to-no-cost way of meeting the goals of the Citrus County Basin Management Action Plans to Reduce Nutrient Loading from Urban Lawn Fertilizer. FLDEP estimates that the rainy season ban will reduce nutrient loading by over 146,000 pounds of nutrients a year in Citrus County. This is why reducing the lawn fertilizer applied during the season when we have torrential rains and delivering it into our springs and waterways is a no-brainer. So thank you for proceeding with this measure. You have broad public support for this. Citrus will join over 100 other Florida communities that have done the same, including Hernando County. And today, I submit a letter to you for this measure, signed by 23 local residents, a dozen local businesses. local business owners, and many conservation organizations who have endorsed this, and some of which are here today, namely the Florida Springs Council, Save the Manatee Club, Florida Native Plant Society, Citrus County Audubon, Citrus County League of Women Voters, Homasasa River Alliance, and also the Nature Coast Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. Also, Sierra Club welcomes the opportunity to collaborate with you on the design and implementation of an education and awareness campaign designed to let the county, the public, know about the new fertilizer rules. Studies show most people who are aware of the rules will follow them. We have successfully coordinated with Hernando County on such a campaign that includes laminated flyers distributed to all fertilizer retailers that they post at point-of-sale and to commercial landscape businesses, as well as local public service announcements, newspaper ads, this is one that ran in the Hernando Sun, and social media exposure. So let's get the word out together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's great. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Chair. Chairman, my name is Chalkarali in Bernice County. A radical rethinking of nitrogen lawn fertilizer is suited to an age where biological ways of doing things are becoming more important than chemical ways, where the environment is treated as a part of the process and not a dumping ground for what has not been used. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this ordinance forward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. Eugene Kelly, I am President of the Florida Native Plant Society. Devon already stole all my thunder. So I just want to be able, she mentioned us, that we thank you, and I just want to be able to tell you personally, and since I still have a little time at the podium, I also wanted to bring up, a little more than a month ago, we were really dismayed when the Water Management District talked about giving up, surplusing the 40 acres that comprise the Chasewitzka River campground. You came to the rescue on that. So thank you. And just this morning, you issued a proclamation naming October Florida Native Plant Month that was issued by our local Citrus County chapter. And so thank you again. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. Next, please.
Tony Ayo, Beverly Hills, Florida. Okay, I wanted to thank you all so much for working on this fertilizer change because it's very important to me. I think that with the added publications, we're at all sales sites, that will definitely help all of the customers and the residents of Citrus County to be informed as to what is the proper procedures, what is the legal procedures here in Citrus County in order to protect our aquifer and our springs, which is very important, especially this time of the year when we celebrate Save Our Waters Week, which I just love. However, right now, I'm looking at growth management on your C-12. I think we're going to need to talk about that before you decide what you're going to do, because that will greatly impact our water. And you're going to take it away from the public, having any say, and the Commissioners. So that's a very important thing. You need to really walk a thin line on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for being here. I commend you for taking action like this. Coming from Bvard County, we've seen our waterways over there destroyed by fertilizer, I mean, killing seagrass, hurting the manatees. And I commend you for coming forth and doing something like this, because I'm going to tell you, it was devastating for the Indian River Lagoon and the way that this fertilizer and waste, you know, that impacts our waterways. So kudos to you all for addressing this and taking care of it now before it gets out of hand. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Chair, for the record, can one of please have him state his name? Sir, could I get you to state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Ray Brown. I live at Homasasa and resident of Citrus County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Maxine Connor, Natural Resources Chair for Citrus League of Women Voters. My main message to you today is one of gratitude for your support. We have a multifaceted problem with many inputs of excess nutrients, including septic fertilizer and stormwater runoff. The Basin Management Action Plans written by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection are recovery strategies for our outstanding Florida springs here in Citrus County, because the springs have been declared impaired by the FDEP because of nutrient pollution. Septic-to-sewer projects, which are costly, as we know, are ongoing. So now is the time to improve our fertilizer ordinance, which is low to no cost, to reduce nutrient pollution runoff from fertilizer. The rapid growth of development in our county will mean more lawns, but now that with this updated fertilizer ordinance, we have a good and necessary tool to reduce the excess fertilizer runoff, which feeds toxic algae blooms. So thank you to staff and Commissioners, and Commissioners who wrote great articles in The Chronicle, and thank you to The Chronicle for printing the great educational editorials and articles. The Commissioners, the Commissioners' articles show that they are doing their very best to be good stewards of our water. What we do up here on the surface ends up down there in the aquifer. So much nutrient pollution has gone down there into our drinking water that it continues to come up in the springs, flowing into our rivers and out into the Gulf. We have a moral obligation to protect our drinking water and coastal habitat, including the vast seagrass aquatic preserves off our coast. Red tide is out there in the Gulf, and we shouldn't feed it. We don't want to become another Indian River Lagoon, as was just mentioned, with massive manatee deaths. A collapse in our environment would lead to a collapse in our local tourism-based economy. It would just take one algae bloom, excuse me, to ruin a whole scallop season or a whole vacation on the water. As Chair said, we continue to ask for state grants to clean up our rivers. This improved ordinance shows the state that our county has a plan to reduce the excess pollution. Fertilizer ordinances are also good educational tools, which residents and commercial applicators use once they know the rules. Alternative summer safe products without nitrogen and phosphorus are available. Thank you for recognizing how important it is to protect this coastal habitat and its inhabitants, as we depend on this for food, our health, and our ecotourism economy. It is so appropriate that this opportunity is up for a vote during Save Our Waters Week, as previous speaker did mention. This area is a very special place with an abundance of ecologically sensitive springs and spring-fed rivers like nowhere else in the world. Please vote yes to this improved fertilizer ordinance that has wide community support. And let's work together to protect our water and preserve what makes Citrus County a truly special place. Thank you so much. All of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close open to the public.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
I want to first thank everyone that came in support of this. I'm going to be speaking during my agenda item later on some series of meetings I had at Florida Association of Counties last week with Marion and Levy Counties about the state of the lower with Lakouchi. So stay tuned for those comments later. And if you're ready for a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance for fertilizer.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further comment by the board?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barrett?
Okay. I will probably approve it. However, we need to remember, how many people have gotten tickets from the ordinance we had? Second one, who's going to enforce it if nobody was enforcing the first ordinance that was approved? Number three, who's going to pay for these flyers that this wonderful person brought? Are they going to just appear, or are they going to be put into our budget? I'd love to see them appear by whatever group is going to do them, okay, which would be wonderful. I did talk with the lady from the University of Florida when I was at the Florida County meetings last week, and she explained to me that the ordinance that we have now, that they've worked with the county Commissioners to come up with, was more than sufficient for our county because of when the rain is and when the rain isn't. But at this point, like I said, I will probably approve it just for the fact that so many other Commissioners feel that it's a good idea. But I did have questions, and I want you to think about that. How and who is going to enforce this? How and who enforce the other ordinance? I don't think there is anybody charged with anything. But however, you are, if this ordinance goes through, you are cutting off livelihood for people that are out there trying to have a business in the landscape, except for institutional. And I don't feel that we should have the right, as Commissioners, to cut anybody's livelihood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for clarification on the motion, it's approve the ordinance and authorize the Chair to sign it.
And authorize the Chair to sign it. I'm sure Commissioner Finnegan will chime in when she gets back.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, it is 4-0. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
How's it going, Court's Brian? Look into. Question on C-12. As mentioned earlier, a couple of people reached out to me separately, asking about that. Does that change the process for any applications, like, let's say, a sand mine or whatever coming to Citrus County? Does that change anything coming to the board? Is this directing staff to be able to handle those things without coming to you guys? What exactly is it changing? Or is it just more procedural? You know, if the county has to do a permit for something, these people are authorized to sign it. So just a question for clarification on that.
Yes, Anthony Ayo for Stop the Sand Mine Committee, Pine Ridge Estates. Okay, this is our comment. To the Citrus County Board of Commissioners, I am submitting this public comment in strong opposition to the resolutions passed on September 23, 2025, that authorize the county staff to execute permits and authorizations with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, SWIFT-MUD, and the Florida Department of Transit without board approval notice or public notice. These actions strip public and elected officials of meaningful oversight by allowing unelected staff to sign and legally binding documents without placing the county seal or with, and without the board discussion or public review. You have now cleared the path for major environmental and infrastructure permits to be submitted or modified behind closed doors. This directly affects the contested sites like the proposed southward sand mine, a project located within a priority focus area for an outstanding Florida spring system, and the special flood hazard area, which is currently subject to multiple environmental, legal, and public interest concerns. These new resolutions may now allow SWIFT-MUD ERP permits to be approved, modified, without a public hearing. FDP approvals for borrow pits, de-watering, discharges to proceed without elected oversight. FDOT coordination or site access agreements to be signed by the county or staff, including properties where the ownership is in dispute or under eminent domain proceedings. These signatures are now legally binding, even if the B.O.C.C. has never reviewed the contents or the applications.
Thank you.
Please reconsider.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. Mr. Howard, can you address?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mitch to come forward, if he can, on behalf of Carl. Carl's out on vacation, but if he can come forward and explain what this is and what
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mitch Aiken, Assistant Public Works Director, here on behalf of Carlton Hall. So in essence, this resolution is just an update, so there already is a resolution that is in place that allows for staff to sign for these type of permits. And in essence, it needs to be updated for the new staff that is present. That's primarily what we're looking for.
Can you address the concerns that were raised?
Yes, so, you know, in essence, these concerns from the citizens, they would still follow the same process. So anything that was a change, anything that was, you know, a major change would still come before the Board of County Commissioners. It would just allow staff to sign these agreements with, once directed.
Did you have something to say?
I think the distinction is that these county staff will be making application for these permits on behalf of the county for county works or county property, as compared to the concerns that were raised, that other property owners might be getting permits for various things that were raised. The county staff would never be applying for permits on behalf of other people. It would only be that the county staff would be applying on behalf of the county. So, thank you.
Board, do you have any questions? Commissioner Finnegan?
I think just to alleviate the concerns, I would probably put a period on that, directed by the board. They're conducting business directed by the board and just signing on the board's behalf. But thank you for the concern.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Chair, did you want to catch up on the last one with Commissioner Finnegan?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Finnegan?
You didn't hear me from the bathroom say aye?
No.
Oh, okay. Aye.
And also, did she agree to amend the second to include authorizing the Chairman to sign?
Yes, I did.
We good, Clerk?
All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll go to our first open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward.
Michael McGrath, Sierra Club Florida, for the record. Just want to address some of the comments from Commissioner Barrett real quickly. So retailers and also lawn professionals can still sell fertilizer products that don't contain nitrogen and phosphorus during the prohibited season in the summer months. There are many compliant products out there. Pinellas County has a very voluminous record of that, that you can refer to. I think I sent that to you earlier. If I didn't, I will certainly send it to you as soon as possible, so you can review that. This is not going to impact anyone's ability to do site visits or put anyone out of business. So I just wanted to be very clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gil Phalen. Yeah, I just wish we cared about our children as much as we do scallops, but, you know, DeSantis said that Florida is a state where woke goes to die, and it's backed up by some laws. And actually, there's a criminal incident filed against Adam Chang, the Board of County Commissioners, and the Library Advisory Board. And there's also a complaint filed with the Florida Attorney General specifically for the multiple direct violations of Florida Statute HB 1545 regarding harmful communications to a minor. These communications involve second and third-degree felonies with up to 15 years in prison. Both boards have knowingly kept perverted and sick books available for our children to access, and it's easy to prove because we have all these meetings videotaped, right, where we specifically were telling you what the books are to get rid of them, and yet they continue. One of the five-year prison statutes, 847.0138, the person must knowingly transmit material that is harmful to a minor. So for a long time, the Jack of Hearts, total pornography- So, for a long time, the Jack of Hearts, total pornography in every way. You knew it, you were told about it, you all said it's okay, all the librarians approved it, just wonderful. Okay? And it's really explicit sexual material in there. And the thing is that it's a two-year statute of limitation. So, every time that individual accessed that online or was handed to it at the library, that's a criminal count, okay? You'll potentially face a five-year prison term for each and every access. And the other garbage, I mean, I was in there, oh, this is beautiful, you know? All about gender and are you a boy or girl, it doesn't matter. You continue, this is right at the library right now. Well, it's in my hands right now, but... There's also another aspect to the law that can be in prison for knowingly providing material that lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. You know, we're tasked with guiding our children physically, spiritually, and mentally. And I really think you're all failing the children big time. And you think you're above the law, I know. We've had the serial liar Ruthie colluding with the lawyer. And they're breaking rules and laws, and you know, you get whipped by a wet noodle, that's about all you get. I think at the minimum, he should be fired for that collusion. But you continue to pervert and abuse our children with these sick books, and you're destroying their innocence, and you confuse their souls.
Next, please.
Hi, I'm Jamie, and I'm from Hernando, and I love the library. But our library has been reduced to the point where it no longer serves taxpayers who fund it. Just last month, we lost access to over 5,000 resources when the interlibrary loan system was suspended. These include out-of-print books, academic resources, genealogy records, and research materials that cannot be placed by just going online. I subscribe to out-of-district libraries, oh, sorry. Oh, whoa. I subscribe to out-of-district libraries when I can, but those memberships are becoming harder to find as funding declines. They're costly, not available to everyone, and they don't replace the resources a well-funded local library provides, since distance usually limits them to digital options only, which are more expensive for every library. I've heard different arguments used to justify censoring other people's reading choices, and even some that claim these cuts make financial sense. But in a state where 67% of our boys and 57% of our girls are behind in reading by fourth grade, the real cutoff where it's gonna impact their future, and one out of four of our adults struggles with basic reading, cutting library funding doesn't seem to help anybody. Libraries are part of the solution. They build empathy, support lifelong learning, and offer resources beyond books, from job help to senior programs. The more support we give them, the more they give back. So, please keep funding the library. Supporting our shared resources is one of the best ways to strengthen and uplift the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
All right, Curtis Bryant-Lacanto. First thing I want to address is the sales tax. I think the Chamber Commerce did a great job with the presentation, collecting the data. I was impressed they got 500 people, because our consultant that we hired can't get 500 people in there and do something, and we're paying them half a million dollars. Anyway, so, but I do think we need more data. I know that there was a push-up here to kind of get this through to November. I think we have a little bit more time than that. I think we need to focus on the data aspect, collect more data. One question that came to mind is, I heard some of you guys talk about reducing millage if we do some of this. What if the support of the 60% of the people that said it, said they would support it if they kept the millage rate the same? Like, we don't know that data, we don't know where people want to go with that. So, kind of, you know, asking you guys to get more information on that before we make a decision. I know that you guys are talking about it in two weeks. Next thing I want to bring up is the Inspire contracts, our consultant that we hired at $560,000 for the comp plan review. I understand you guys want to do a review. I understand this is state law, it's required every seven years. My understanding is that we've had staff do it every single time for however long. I don't think we've ever paid a consultant to do it. Why is this contract any different? Why can't we do this on our end? And why are we hiring a company based on a contract for Tarpon Springs, something that we can't control? If Tarpon Springs fires this company, we lose the contract. Why do we want that? And if you think that doesn't happen, we fired a consultant for the IMA project for interchange management areas. We fired our consultant for that, so why doesn't Tarpon Springs potentially fire somebody for that? I think it needs to be a RFP/RQ process. I know that you guys mentioned Inspire because they want community involvement, and that's one of the reasons, the selling points for them. We're paying them $28,000 per public workshop. Some of their stats that they've gotten, out of Sumter County, 154,000 people, they had 881 visits to the website, 234 people filled out in the survey, 15 people showed up to the in-person workshops. St. Johns County, 320,000 people, 213 participants in their survey. Pasco County, 650,000 people, 1,300 participants, 300 attendees at their workshops. They don't have a good track record of bringing the public opinion to you guys. Is this the right company for Citrus County? We hired them for comp plan adjustments. Chapter two of our comp plan, recreation in open space, they were ranked fourth in Tarpon Springs. Chapter six, multimodal transportation, they were ranked fourth. Chapter 10, land use, they were ranked second. Chapter 14, or 15, economic development, they were ranked third. A quote from this B.O.C.C. on June 10th, 2025, "Everything is built around resiliency." A quote from the Chronicle from one of the commissioners this past weekend, "Together we can build a stronger, more resilient community for generations to come." Staff emails to other staff members notified the staff members that Inspire did not qualify for community resiliency on their Tarpon Springs contract, the one area that they were not qualified for. That community resiliency, it sounds a lot like our chapter four of our land development, or our comprehensive plan, coastal lakes and river management. So, I don't think that this company is the best for Citrus County.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Deborah Spence, Citrus County. I don't know what's happened. I've been gone for a couple of months, and when I come back, I hear all sorts of noise about 491 and following process and not following process. And there was a resolution put out against the chairperson for this. Commissioner Bates, I respect you for what you try to do. The methods aren't always perfect to us, and we have to take advantage of anything that we can do. 491 is a mess. The way I feel about the state and Citrus County is they don't like us. We were allowed, I think it was five jobs, if you will, to get funding for. And it's kind of like being in an airplane, and it's going down, and you're told you can save one of your children. You've got three of them. We have so many needs in this county, and we're limited to what we can ask for. 491 is a disaster that was made by the state. They put the Sun Coast Highway in here, they need to extend it. We are in desperate shape right now, because we have everybody tail-ending into Citrus County. When we had the last two hurricanes, they came into 44. The state police were at the end of 44, letting all of the traffic off Sun Coast go. People going from the west to the east could not pass. So, we are now at a dead end for Citrus County trying to evacuate in a disaster. And the state needs to step up. They put the Sun Coast in, they need to correct it. Commissioner Barrick, there was an accusation made as to whether you were racist or not. You made an apology, but let me please say that an apology does not start with "if I offended you." An apology starts with "I'm sorry I offended you," whether you meant to do it or not.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Point of order, comments should be directed to the chair.
Yes, please.
I'm just commenting what's been made out in public, and I'm saying, I don't know. With that, you then presented a resolution against the commissioner for the 491 thing. We need to work together, and you're not working together. You're stabbing each other in back, you're coming up with resolutions. Commissioner Kennard?
Make your comments towards me, please. Just make your comments to me, please.
Okay, to you. This is Book Page. We were up in Massachusetts. We have a library card in Massachusetts, it's on the front counter. My wife picked up a library book, and this is kind of a funny story, because she went up there, she looked through it, and she ordered three books to the Homosassa Library and picked them up when we get back here. She's now reading those three books, and she has two more in here that she has indicated she wants to get as soon as she's through with these three. I don't know what's going on in Citrus County. The library's back up in the main news again. I saw a video the other day of a 10-year-old boy singing, "I want to love somebody, I want to feel the heat from somebody." That's not provocative. Why aren't we complaining about videos and video games? And it's always about library. They're not getting the information from the library, they're getting it from online. And Mr. Lombroa is a one-trick pony, and we need to stop that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vicki Brown, Homosassa, Florida. We have lived here going on almost two years, and we love Citrus County. And I'm here to speak on the line item, Book Page. I love our libraries. I've always patronized my libraries wherever I've lived. I just, you know, love the libraries. But I didn't even know what Book Page was until I read from one of the commissioners the comment, I read it in the Chronicle. It's only $4 per person. And that $4 per person meant something to me, because $4 per person is my once-a-week coffee. Believe it or not, $4 at our church's coffee cafe. So, I don't believe Book Page itself is bad. I don't. I think I've gotten it in the past, when I've been at the library, along with all the other literatures and the things up on the wall. But, just what one lady said, when you're reading it, if there's something that interests me, then I'm gonna go look it up online. So, you know, my thing is, why are we paying two to three times for the same item? I can go on my phone, I did, I put in Book Page, because I wanted to know what this whole hoopla was about. And it took me right to the actual publication of Book Page. Now, yes, you're not paying that, I'm paying that with my cellphone service or whatever. But that's my money that I can choose to spend. Budgeting is hard, you know, whether it's family, personal, business, or in this situation, the library and the counties. But budgeting follows three different principles. Live within your means, save for future emergencies or future goals. And I still have to do that as a 63-year-old retired senior citizen. But the main thing is cut unnecessary spending. Cut unnecessary spending. So, if we're paying that two and three times, where I can go on my phone, type in Book Page, then I can go to the library, I can use their computers, you know, pick my book of interest, or pick what my interests are, and the kids can do this, too. It's gonna bring up these books, whatever books that are interesting to you. The Book Page, I love that, I did see that it was advertising, not advertising, but promoting three Christian books this month. And that's something I am interested in. But I'm just saying, we don't need to be paying for the same thing. So, that $3,300, you know, if every multiplicity, or whatever that word is, could cut one little thing from their budget, $3,300 from each, or $5,000, you know, it would save us money. So, that's what I wanted to say. Sorry, I was so nervous, it's my first time ever speaking, even though my son-in-law is a mayor and has been on city council for two terms. My first time ever speaking at a council meeting. I've gone to plenty of them over there on the west-east coast, but anyway, thank you very much.
We're here twice a month, come on back.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Next, please.
I've already filled out a card.
Say your name in the mic this time.
So, my name is Ray Brown. I live in Homosassa, Florida, and a citizen of Citrus County. I want to share real leadership, it looks like. At least two commissioners saw me standing out on our streets protesting your spending of taxpayer money. Only one commissioner stopped and asked how she could do better for our community. The other commissioner left without talking to me. Thank you, Mrs. Finnegan, for stopping. That's real leadership. Three of you commissioners, Bates, Davis, and Kennard, remind me of the "see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil," at a time when you should be seeing, hearing, and speaking about what's happening in our community. Now, maybe it's not your fault, not understanding the taxpayers you govern, you're just policymakers. And when different departments ask you for more money, you instinctively want to raise taxes, not even knowing if that tax money is being spent wisely. You think, you just think they need more money, and you lay the burden on taxpayers. What you should be asking, are these departments spending taxpayer money correctly and efficiently with little waste? We, the taxpayer, come to you and show you where you can save, and yet, you could care less. Why would you? You think that even $4, saving $4 in taxes is no big deal. Are you kidding us? If you can't even see saving a little bit, how can we trust you with the bigger things? Ms. Davis, I don't think you understand the chain of commands. Crap that's not flow uphill, it flows downhill, like you indicated in the last meeting. The correct flow is from the taxpayers to the commissioners, then to the different departments that... Come on, Ray. That's the right chain of commands. And when taxpayers find a place to cut waste, it's up to you to follow our lead, not yours. There are too many other ways that people can find Book Page without the library spending hard-working taxpayer monies on this magazine. Thank you for being here to listen to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's me, Tony Ayo, Pine Ridge Estates. Been here since 2005, actually. I wanted to, once again, commend you all on your work for Save Our Waters Week. It's really wonderful. But I must implore you to understand that the county commissioners are the guardians of our springs and our aquifer. You're the ones that keep development from polluting those springs and killing off our manatees, which is the main driver of our economy in this Citrus County. We are known worldwide as the manatee capital of the world. It's the only place you can swim with the manatees. It's very important that we try to keep this the way it is. At this current level, we are now 60% down in the water flow, I don't know if this thing's working or not, down from our original water flows out of the springs from the 1930s. 60% decrease. Now, we're working on the last 40, okay? So, as we build more homes and we increase our population, understand we're sucking out that water to provide for our community, okay? And what's going to happen is what happened to Miami. Back in the 20s, Biscayne Bay was a freshwater bay. It's no longer freshwater, it's all saltwater. And the saltwater is now intruded under the ground, under the land, and it's going more inland, because Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties have all sucked out all the water. So, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna manage this growth properly and protect our springs, as you are commissioned to do? Or what are you gonna do? Yes, I'm fighting for the, to stop the sandmine, now that the Florida Department of Transit is involved in it. We just found out today that those proposed, they say they're wetlands over there, three little wetlands. They're not wetlands, they're springs. You need to send Joanna Co. too and her team out there and determine if that really is a spring. Because wetlands usually has algae blooms and stuff like that on it. This is clean, fresh water that's cold and clear. That's usually indicative of a spring. So, again, it is your responsibility. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robin Orlandi, Don Ellen. I'm a frequent flyer, I realize that. I just wanted to say today, we all know hatred divides us, and I'm apologizing to you on behalf of the public for the way that you're attacked, because it's not fair, it's not right, and it certainly doesn't represent the majority of the community. So, let's be united. I wanted to talk about the loss of the interlibrary loan as well. We know from metro forecasting studies that our population is projected to leap in the next 10, 20, 30 years. People coming in to get those higher-paying jobs, higher-skilled, they're gonna want a strong library with a diverse collection. The voices in the community that keep claiming that there's terrible pornography in the library, all these naughty things, represent a very... all these naughty things, represent a very small group of people that do not reflect the complexity and diversity of our community that already exists and where it's going to grow to. So, I would ask you, please, do continue funding the library at the current rates. Book Page is a controversy, and I keep hearing, "Well, people can get it online, people can get it online." But as I made during a meeting last week, the point I made is that libraries serve many people that do not have the economic means to have electronic access at home. And in times when inflation is as insane as it is currently, those folks are gonna demand more, not less, library service. If you can provide a physical material to a person, even having Book Page, which is a magazine review to take home, that means something because it's on the coffee table, you know, their friends come over, they have something to share where they might not have that otherwise. Again, physical materials for those in need represent a connection to learning, to literacy, and they can't be replaced with a phone. That's not a book, it doesn't engender my curiosity. I mean, I might look there, but it's physically not the same result. So I would ask you, even if you don't fund Book Page, I would ask you that you do, but even if you don't, if that money not be deleted from the library budget, but be assigned to a different line item because there are uses for that. Also, if people are printing out, as I read in the paper, a suggestion was we could print out other reviews. Well, thinking of staff time and paper costs and ink costs, to print out a Book Page when you can actually have one at a very low cost, I think those costs would match one another. And I have 17 seconds left. Finally, I wanted to just say again, you know, thank you for everything that you are doing. Again, thank you for your support of the fertilizer ordinance and clean water articles about the aquifers. Very much appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Josh Wooten, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm gonna take this opportunity now so I can skedaddle to some other stuffs I gotta do and not hang out for the budget hearing. But two things, one is great discussion on the sales tax. You have some information that you've received. There are people in the community that are claiming that it wasn't a good representation, but, you know, it was people that cared enough to come forward, and so we should give some weight to that. But also, and I just whispered to Veronica, who helped us with the initial survey, would y'all like me to get with the steering committee to get it out another week, now that we have time? I mean, we were kind of going up against the timeline. Maybe we can tell people there's still an opportunity to continue weighing in. So, if, all we gotta do is hear a yes from y'all, and we will get that thing open, maybe even as quick as tonight, and get it closed in time to give you all the results before the next meeting. So that's one thing. The other thing is that the chamber is really neutral on it. Y'all noticed I've stayed out of it, I haven't even participated in all the things. But there will come a time where our board will vote to take a position. And one of the things that's already been discussed is Commissioner Kennard, which you brought up, those two tenths of a mils. Not particularly that process, but some ad valorem relief, as bad as you need money, that there should be some acknowledgement. You know, if 25% is paid by visitors, then let's give the taxpayers a little bit of relief, at least out of that pot, or the two tenths, four tenths of a percent, sounds very attractive. And quite frankly, the conservation element was mentioned by the people, it wasn't high on the list, but perhaps, you know, you could somehow find a way in the ordinance to put a couple hundred thousand dollars aside a year, so that if an opportunity comes along, that might be a good thing to do. Anyway, that's next meeting, but if y'all tell me to open up the thing, I will. So, on the budget, I'm not gonna be here to speak on it, but I can assure you, the business community wants less taxes. But we have also decided not to get involved in that because we understand y'all's needs and that you're digging yourselves out of a hole. And we think that allowing you to do what you know professionally what needs to be done is probably the best course of action. So we have stayed out of the debate. But knowing that they want that, and I'm gonna direct this to you, Chair, it is kind of insulting that we get to the end and we try to save $4 by cutting the health department and library when, you know, we really need broad tax reform. And I think that's kind of political grandstanding at the very end of the budget, and it doesn't really move the needle much. If the issue is the $3,300 for whatever publication that is, I have no idea what it is, that's about two cents a person, not $4 a person. So, we can get to the end of it and get, create animosity in the community over $4. But the truth of the matter is, we need every penny we can get to continue to run this county efficiently. But I'm all for diversification of the tax, how y'all get money. And hopefully, we can do massive reductions down the road. You don't know what the legislature's coming up with next year either. So, we're going to be agnostic on your current budget, but we're hoping less political grandstanding tonight and more seriously considering the budget and keeping y'all five together to pass a serious budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hello. Forgive me, I have no voice. Hi, I'm Alicia McBretney. I live here in Inverness. I want to speak to the library issue, please. So I watch these meetings live from home, and I feel like I'm like watching a snippet from some strange timeline that is like a combination of the movie Footloose and Puritan, Massachusetts, like à la the Salem witch trials, and then Days of Our Lives. Do you remember like the whole witch thing from Days of Our Lives back in the day? It was ridiculous. Well, this is ridiculous. Commissioners, I implore you to be cognizant of the fact that the very vocal minority attacking our library and the library functions and budget items do not represent the majority of parents and library patrons here in Citrus County. In a time where public school enrollment is down and thus funding is down, many families are looking at homeschooling and other alternative educational opportunities. This is not a time to reduce the strength of your libraries. The loss of the interlibrary loan program is devastating. I've worked at a library, I'm not sure if you haven't, how you would appreciate how devastating that truly is. Reducing the library's resources is not only counterproductive, but it can actually be harmful to Citrus County's families and Citrus County's children. Most of us who are rational understand that we as adults and as parents are responsible for the things that our children consume. It is our job. It is not the government's job. It is not the job of special interest groups or zealots to control what we as parents choose to have our families consume. It's about personal responsibility. This loud minority led by a paid lobbyist, please let us not forget, trying to micromanage the library is doing all of us a disservice. Unfortunately, if you listen to them, it sounds like the library is full of specters, cackling evil, people hiding within the stacks. I mean, it's ludicrous. It's madness. Those of us who deal in reality know that there are legitimate concerns facing our county, and this is not one of them. Those of us who actually are raising families and work full-time here unfortunately have very limited time to come to these meetings, hence the fact that I'm here with my son. So, I think that's an example of why this noisy misguided majority is getting so much airtime, is because, and we've heard it before, right? Idle hands are the devil's playground. If you have a lot of free time, you're gonna find something to be upset about, and you're gonna cause problems. And that is what this small minority of people is doing. So as a parent, I'm asking you, don't be distracted by these culture wars, please. Keep our libraries strong for Citrus County families like mine.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Maxine Connor, Homosassa. Just briefly, I would just ask you to restore the interlibrary loan function. We have a high population of seniors here, and many of them are on limited income. And if they want a book now from another library, they can see it online in the database of all the books, but now they have to go get it themselves. And I just don't think that's very efficient, and they're burning gas probably to go get it. So, I just think it makes common sense. I used to be a library trustee up in Massachusetts where I come from, and that was one of the things we're very proud of, is our interlibrary loan function. And also academics, you know, can use it as well, because they can get into the databases with their library card, but they can also get books from colleges and other resources across the whole state of Florida. So, please restore that function if you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Last chance? All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Davis.
I did, mom is leaving, thank you for being here. Outstanding comments. I see where you are in the back row, I didn't, I did not write down your name, but to the woman who was talking about the $4 and coffee, I want to say that she's conflating a couple of things. Yes, I just didn't get her name, I was gonna...
Ms. Brown.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. It's $4 per year, and that actually had little to nothing to do with whether we keep Book Page or not. It was actually Commissioner Finnegan, and I applaud her wanting to save us tax dollars, but we had just seen slides as to how badly we're in a hole with rollback in prior years. And so, I was using that as an example, that we can't do that to the health department and the library system, because I absolutely do believe that we should live within our means, and I absolutely do believe in saving for future emergencies and needs. What Commissioner Finnegan's suggestion was that we do rollback and take the money out of reserves for both of those departments. And we can't continually put things off, we have to save for HVAC going out, we have to save for new roofs and things like that. We got hit with back-to-back hurricanes last year. So, $4 a year to ensure that we are prepared to meet challenges as they come is far better fiscal management than having to pay for emergencies out of pocket, on the fly. And all you have to do is look at how badly backlog we are with residential road resurfacing, and we really have to address these issues. In terms of the, I would like staff to tell me what's going on with interlibrary loan program. This is the first I've heard about it, and there's an awful lot of, awful lot of you have mentioned it. Back to the live within your means. What I said about Book Page is that it's under review by the library advisory committee. We give the library a budget, we have a professional staff, we have a library advisory committee. It is not our job to get in those weeds. We let them do that. If they really go astray, then they know that we will step in, but you gotta let the process work. So, I did, I was given several Book Pages to look at. I didn't expect much based on the description, but I'm really looking forward to my next career, and some of you are probably gonna post online that, oh boy, she's gonna be out of here soon, sooner than she wants. We're gonna get rid of her. But it's gonna be fun when I turn to novel writing, because a lot of you are some pretty good characters. Anyway, all joking aside, I'm sure I'll never get to that because I'm an ad writer, I specialize in 30 seconds or less, not that this lengthy speech is an indication. But I was actually, you know, intrigued by some of the books in there. A lot of them are not my cup of tea. You know, my taste runs to Wall Street Journal and military thrillers, but I did, it was more of a magazine about writing, which I really found that I appreciated it. But again, if an interlibrary loan program can be saved by getting rid of Book Page, get rid of it. It's not my, it's not my role to get into that. Tony, AO, the springs, spring flow down. There is no doubt that Tallahassee is driving this bus when it comes to growth management in the state of Florida. There's a lot of things that we can't do other than get into Tallahassee and lobby to give us back control of our state. If you're not growing, you're dying as an economic engine, but the growth right now is just insane. And you'll be happy to know, Florida Association of Counties, last week, we were putting forward our legislative ask to Tallahassee, and Senate Bill 180 was a big push. And it was absolutely unanimous on the committee that hears that to, and they actually called it glitch fix, which I thought was kind of funny, because it was supposed to be only for hurricane properties, and they basically gave carte blanche to developers, theoretically by accident, we're hoping. And one last thing, somebody mentioned the internet is far worse than the libraries. Libraries are not bad at all, by and large. The internet, if you're gonna blame anything on ruining our children's lives, it's the internet, it's TikTok, it's influencers, it's a, you know, children, girls in their teenage years having plastic surgery, for heaven's sake. There's tons of pornography, true pornography, which is naked people, okay, doing things. There's true pornography all over the internet, and it is not in our libraries. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before anybody leaves, the first person I want to address is Mr. Phelan. You and your wife was here at the last meeting. Sometimes your conversation tends to be a bit pugilistic, so I didn't know that any commissioners would reach out. But I looked up an old email address for you that you had sent things, and I tried to email you, it did not go through. An old email, I found a phone number, it did not go through. So, if you have a way to contact you, maybe you'll give it to Reese, this gentleman in the front. I was reaching out because both you and your wife had said, "Nobody will help look at your road." I don't know if you have potholes or what it is, so I was actually trying to reach out to you about your road, and I could not reach you. Mr. Wooten, interesting that you're speaking about the sales tax, but saying, saving, in your opinion, a small amount of money is grandstanding. The problem with getting board, the sales tax passed, is because I think that the general public sees this board collectively as a tax and spend board. Whether we agree with that or not, whether the expenditures are just or not, whether we're digging ourselves out of a hole, I'm talking just pure public perception. So yes, saving money of any kind is a first step to try to get anything else passed. Save a little, gain a lot. That's my opinion, and I stand by that because people can save $4. That's for an average home. There's plenty of people without that average home, that'd be more, and we, surprised the chamber, has forgotten, it's more for businesses. Small business pays more than that for the cost. So, anyway. Inspire, I know, I voted against that, I don't, I appreciate your comments, I don't know that we're gonna be able to walk that back, I wasn't on that side of it. My notes are random, forgive me. Mr. Phelan, also, the jack of hearts, the board actually, I brought it before the board and stated boldly that it was pornography, and the board actually agreed, and it was subsequently removed. I think, Mr. Head might remember, but I think nobody checked it out. I think that was why it was so easy, too, they just pulled it off the shelf, like nobody, nobody checked that out. All the people here concerned, Mr. Air, you're talking a lot lately about our springs and water, the Sierra Club, thank you for that. I also share those concerns as the state of Florida grows, because, as, why I say "the state" and not just Citrus County, because other areas around us with the growth obviously impacts our water and our... impacts our water and our water quality also. And I think that's a team effort from citizens, from county, from state. We all need to work together and look to the future. People have vacant land, and they're allowed to build on that, but what does that mean for the state of Florida? So I appreciate the information that you provide, even to me, the information you put out in the community, and your advocacy efforts. Forgive me if I haven't addressed anyone else, but thank you all for being here and giving your comments. Whether we always agree on things or not, I always appreciate people that take the time and come up and share your thoughts, so thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I sat here and I wrote down a few things. To me, our basic library is supposed to be there for educational, for practicing our reading, teaching our children reading, getting reading better ourselves, should be family-friendly with the topics that it has, and it should be for learning basics like in computers. And that's one of the reasons we added the computers. Okay? But I also see that we don't need to be purchasing magazines that you can get for free. Okay? That was why I was against the Book Page, because it is a magazine like Current Catalog, that they sell you their product. They give you, this is our product, and here's a little bit about it, here's our product, whether it's books or it's household items or whatever. It is a sales tool for Book Page that we are promoting. So for us to take $3,300 out of their budget for that, that was why last meeting, I said we should take it out. I agreed with Commissioner Finnegan. If they saw a need for it in six months, the reserves could be spent to bring it back. The problem is, the reserves are, the library reserves, they're not our general public reserves, because the library has its own set of reserves. So it wouldn't have affected the property taxes that much whatsoever. Okay? When it comes to Inspire, I was very discouraged at what happened last meeting. Okay? We had one person or one presentation for looking at our comp plan, our county comp plan. One person, one presentation, and it was brought to the board, and we're gonna vote on it, we're gonna vote on it. I felt we should have done at least a second and third like we normally do. One presentation, to me, is not fair to anybody else that's out there that does comp plans. And I thought, my idea, and I talked to people at UF, they do have students that are masters and PhD people that were dying to work on comp plans with counties so that they could get experience. And it wouldn't have cost us if they worked with our people that already work in our growth development. Okay? So the thing is, it was not my vote. I voted no, if you remember, to, you know, not hire Inspire. Other people feel Inspire is wonderful. I'm just gonna sit back and watch as we spend over $500,000 on this project. Now, when it comes to, let me see, reserves, that, when it comes to the other things that were discussed, like I said, Book Page, I don't care, I've read it, okay? It's not gonna do anything to me, but it could have saved us money. And even if it's only $4 a year, that's at least a gallon of gas. Okay? So if anybody wants to, wants to say, you know, well, it's only, okay? It's only. People are complaining because we're gonna be going to $10 a month to pay for your fire. Okay? And people are complaining about that. Well, if we could get Book Page for free, why not? Okay? And that was my concern, buying something and paying for something we could actually get for free. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Would be tough to follow that. Michael, first of all, I want to thank you for all the work you put in, each time showing up, sitting through the meetings. I've seen you at the Homosassa River Alliance, giving the talk there, I mean, spreading the message, and ultimately, you've been incredibly successful, not for yourself, but for our community, for our springs, ultimately for our environment. So thank you. However, if you're gonna keep coming up here and giving your input at our meetings on a regular basis, you talk very fast. My Gen 1 AirPods can't keep up, man. I'm gonna have to upgrade. Anyway, all kidding aside, thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Let's see here, who else did I want to answer to? I'll just cover Book Page now. I've not, I've got two of them sitting on my desk. I had, thankfully, an awful lot of time last week to think about this and other issues coming before us today. Where I hope that we can land with this is that ultimately, the library can be done subscribing to Book Page. It is, it is free online. There are multiple resources, book review resources, but I want to keep the library, hold the line on the library budget. They've got other issues, they've got other materials that they can use that money for. I'd like to see them redirect that money towards eBooks or whatever other materials they deem are necessary and appropriate, but this one, you, it's, again, it's free online. Less than 40% of the libraries, public libraries in the country actually subscribe to Book Page. So given the size of our community, the size of our library system, I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's necessary. What else I want to address? Josh, you mentioned the conservation. You know, if you add up, if you add up the number of people that favored this one-cent sales tax money being used for conservation efforts, if you combine that with the number of people who favored that money being used for parks, it's equal to the number of people that want it to be used for road resurfacing. Literally, there's two different. One was 360 people, the other's 362. So combining the conservation parks, and again, I'm not gonna go down this road too far. I know we're gonna have a good conversation about it next meeting. So I think there is a place to make all of that, make all of that work and get the most people in support of this one-cent sales tax initiative. And Josh, you also asked, should we continue polling for the tax? Personally, I think the answer is yes. I think if you can get 10 more people participating, or 100 people, 200 people, whatever it is, over the next, over the next week or so, I'm on board. So I would say, yeah, the more input we can get, the better. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll just chime in a little bit here. I think a lot of it has been addressed, but I wanna go back to the budget, Mr. Brown specifically. Appreciate your comments, but the budget that we're working on to set for this coming year, our Ad Valorem collections will be 143 million. Out of that 143 million, we're required by state law to fund unfunded state mandates of over $51 million. We're required to fund all constitutional officers, one of those being your sheriff, and his total budget is $51 million. So when you're looking at the budget, and I would be happy to sit down with you any day, and I'm not telling you it's perfect, it's just how it's been designed for years. Budget reform, I mean, we hear a lot about DOGE and what's going on. I'm the first one. I mean, I've been talking about budget reform for years, but it's got, we have to find a mechanism that's fair and equitable to everybody, and how are we going to do it? Nobody's telling us. If you take away property taxes, what is the funding mechanism to fund all of these things? And I tend to like to believe that the lion's share of what we do is a reinvestment back into your community, whether we're funding public safety, we're adding road capacity, we're resurfacing roads, we're improving your parks and your libraries, all of those things. But if you were here earlier today, we talked about road resurfacing. We have a $300 million backlog on residential road resurfacing. The suggested amount of money to resurface those roads on an annual basis is $40 million. We're funding less than $20 million a year, trying to keep pace, and this is the last, this year, we took the last $5 million to actually get it back to $16.9 million in residential road resurfacing. If we're going to continue that, we've got to find a different funding mechanism because it's simply not there. I'm not, I don't like it. I mean, I think everybody up here, I mean, if we, if we could figure out a different way to do this and an alternative, I don't think there's one person here that wants to pay property tax. But I also want to caution, if we eliminate property taxes on the homestead, that leaves non-homesteaded. Non-homesteaded means that every person that owns a rental property for housing out there or apartment buildings or whatever that looks like, or any business, they don't have the 3% save-your-home. They have a 10% cap that can go up every year. With taxes and insurance, I can't tell you, I don't know a business out there that has a 10% profit margin year over year. That's what scares me. And I set on a property tax committee board that we're trying to look and figure out what we're going to do going forward, and my, what I, question that I raised was, if we eliminate property taxes, where does this $51 million in unfunded state mandates, where does the state come up to fund those? And if we look at just Tampa Bay region, there are 27,000 households in Tampa Bay that are inside of a REIT, which is a real estate investment trust. It's a corporation that owns real estate property. If they get a 10% bump every year, and you think rental properties are unaffordable now, those companies don't maintain, they don't, they don't hold that, they pass that on to the renter. Every business is going to pass on the cost. So this is a major challenge that's ahead of us as, I mean, it's not just county commissioners. This is for our residents. This is who we are, and we have got to be in this together. The, who's ever in the legislature, and the county commissioners, and all of the city municipalities, and every resident, we should all be at the table. This is our state, our future, our assets, and we all need to be talking about it. No one person should be talking about this in a vacuum. We need to find a path forward, but we need to do it collaboratively and together, not separated. Curtis, I hear you when you talk about the rankings. I mean, as long as I've been in county government and how they put those rankings together, I just have to say, I think those rankings are very subjective. We can have a conversation about it offline if you like. Emily, I appreciate you being here with your, I think she's gone now with her baby, but I appreciate young, you know, young families coming out and young people having a voice. And as far as water, there's no consumptive rights. Whatever is under that ground, I don't care if you shut it, if you shut every single thing down in this county, the consumptive rights belong to everybody as a whole, and it can be sucked up by anybody else. So it doesn't, it's not hinged on what we're developing, that's just water rights, so. But thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring about your county, and thank you for continuing to have your voice heard.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I have two, two questions, more so to Mr. Howard. Commissioner Davis had asked about the loss of the interlibrary loan. Can we get an email or something on that?
I'll follow it with staff. That's the first I've heard of it as well, but we'll, we'll make sure everybody gets a.
I just wanted to get on.
We'll take care of that.
I just, I just looked it up. It's a state thing.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can get it back or not, but state funding cut or something.
We'll do a deeper dive and get an email to y'all.
Second question. At a board meeting, we discussed some time ago because we're throwing out there now $40 million for roads. Literally, only a year or two ago, we said if we could just get to $20 million, we'd be fine. And we had talked about staff going back and trying to get some real numbers. I mean, I get, we could have been off, but by double, you know?
Well, that's the recommended, the amount is, we said we wanted to fund at 20 million. The recommended amount to stay above that was to fund at 40 million, not, we said we wanted to fund at 20 million.
I see.
And soon, Matt McDonald will come forward and actually give us some better numbers, I think, coming forward in the next couple of months, we'll be presenting.
And Madam Chair, I, we, you were off talking about property taxes, but actually, this past weekend, I had thought a lot about it and started looking about numbers and had an idea, actually, that the legislator has not, the legislature has not had yet, and I had a great opportunity last night to share that with some people, including our CFO, and it got a little traction. My numbers weren't verified yet, but I don't, I think that we could have a great plan in the state of Florida to reduce, not everybody for property taxes, but something people can achieve that, too, and I, I have a plan. And I'm not in the legislature, but I'm happy to share that with whoever will listen. I think that people are afraid to give their ideas for elections or whatnot. What if it's not a good idea? Well, I think you're gonna have to have some ideas that other people go, mm, there's a problem with that. And there have been ideas floated, and I, I see the issues with that. If you say, all homesteaded properties don't have property tax anymore, then you get the floodgates coming in, and those of us that have worked and lived and raised our kids here forever, we're paying for that. I see all the problems, but as clear as day, I see the solution, too. So I am looking forward.
Well, do tell.
Well, I don't have the numbers, and I'm not prepared, but I'll, I'll give the gist. I mean, I'm, I'm okay, because I'm sure naysayers out there will go, oh, that won't work for whatever reason. That's okay. Dial it in. Let's all work together. Like you said, let's help our legislature. Let's dial it in. So I see the issues, right? Just like I said, if you, at first, they said no property tax, and then they said, well, we'll have to do it just on homesteaded properties. Well, if the numbers are correct, and that's why I said I haven't verified those, I thought something, I looked at, coming out of FAC, so you might know that, over, let's just say $19 million, over $18 million for Ad Valorem. 35.1% of that, they said, are homesteaded. So that takes a lot of that, let's just call it $19 billion, away. Now, the problem is, if the state of Florida said, no more for homesteaded, everybody's gonna move here. What will that do? It'll drive our, our house costs up. It'll hurt the people that are still living in the state of Florida. So my thought was, what if it's something earned? What if it's something that young people and people that live, work, give to our state day after day earn, like a retirement? So maybe if you've paid homesteaded, not on the same house, because we do have portability, so if you are just paying on a house, a homesteaded property for, let's say, 25 years, 30 years, then it ends. Then the state of Florida can prepare for that. It takes away the 18, let's just call it $19 billion, and reduces that. So now, how do you pay for that, right? Well, people are saying, well, tourists should pay for that for us. If you add another penny to, like, hotel and beds tax, again, forgive my numbers because literally, this was this weekend, I talked about it last night, and I wanted to get with experts to drill down the numbers, that looks like another penny, a quarter of a billion dollars. If you add one penny in sales tax in the state of Florida, that's more like 5.5, or it's over $5 billion. One penny, if we wait and do homesteaded, but after 25 or 30 years, that may cover it, and that may allow the state of Florida to plan. Again, I am sharing this publicly. I feel like, hopefully, you see it as bold, because, you know, I literally haven't even had time to go to the actual sources to get all the correct numbers and information, but I'm going to be sharing this with legislators that may go, oh, well, I don't know, but... that may go, oh, well, I don't know, but I'll tell you, last night, I got some good traction, and I was asked about, what do you think, you know, and I'm better with numbers and laws than I am remembering names, the representative that came out with a plan, I respect that. Somebody finally said, let's try this. So another senator asked me what my thoughts was about that. So the idea is, if they buy a house, and it's X amount of dollars, you front load. And the, the round number was, okay, what if you bought a million dollar house and you had to tack on thirty thousand dollars in the payment? My issue with that is, young people starting out, I don't know about all of you, when I bought my first house, I was in such a tight, tight payment situation. Even five thousand dollars back then, or ten thousand dollars added, put me out of the bracket where I could afford for my payment plus escrow. So I don't like that idea, because I think that would hurt people beginning to buy that first homesteaded property. It would inflate the cost too much to put into their initial payment. And then they are to rents, right? And I don't want to see that side go up, because that, in essence, will hurt people that are saving. I want to make homes affordable in the state of Florida, and I don't think front loading your taxes does it. I do think, when you tell a young person, if you work hard and you can get into a house, and you stay here, and you give in to our state, and you're paying taxes that you can see in the future, it's all going to be worth it. By that time, you're winding down, right? Hopefully you're making a little money, you're saving money, some people are still tight, they're looking forward to social security, but before they get to that full retirement point, they could then possibly have no property taxes anymore. So now they have this income, and they could have a solid retirement. That is my idea, I have thrown it out now. Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't know if I should be thinking about that or not, we'll see what comes. But hopefully, if that idea doesn't get us all the way there, that somebody else will pick that up in the power of our Florida legislature, and run with it, and help, I want to sit with them, i- if they'll invite me, I will help mold these ideas, but I think Florida can lead the way to do this. I know every county commissioner probably in the state of Florida, maybe except for me, is going, oh my gosh, this is crazy, you can't eliminate property taxes. I agreed with that, but I'm an out of the box enough thinker to go, we can't do that, that's insane, and we can't push it off to businesses, what can we do? And that's the plan I came up with. So I'm happy to discuss it more, I'm going to drill down the numbers, maybe I'll, you know, find other ways financially in the state of Florida that we could pay for this, but there it is, it's out there.
Well, thank you. It's a, I sat on a, thank you. I, you know, I think all sixty-seven counties, everybody's looking hard to try to figure this out, so we've been, we've been hard at it, you know, through the Florida Association of Counties, and the commissioners all coming together, and we had about a two-hour discussion about it last week, so, but.
You should have been there. I'd be happy to come, invite me to the next one.
Well, it'll be in December. So, all right, Janet, or Commissioner Barrett, did you have something? My apologies.
No, I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
And make a motion to approve E one A through E one D.
All right. So I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E two.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E three.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan, all in favor, signify by, or any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve E four.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett, and a second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E five.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kennard. Chair, I'm sorry, yes. Can I get clarification of that, is that A and B?
A and B, please.
Kennard, can you?
Yes.
Okay. Any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. E six?
Motion to approve E six.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E eight.
Second.
A through F?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries five zero. All right. Outstanding items, Ms. Veronica.
Hello, Commissioners, missed you last week, but I appreciate being able to go home to my toddler. I do have updates from last week, which I've integrated into this week's sheet, and then I'll have one other update once I'm done with our regular projects. For the pavement management system, which was discussed earlier, we are working on a software configuration with the company, and that is almost complete. Once that's completed, we will work on the initial optimization analysis and get some reports ready, as Mr. Howard mentioned, to present to the board, getting us some better road, road numbers. Deltona's scoppy surfacing construction is currently on track, it's in progress at about fifty percent complete. That might be a little low for the actual completion, but there were still some items left when I had my verbal discussion with the team the other day. We're looking at thermoplastic striping, and then the final layer for asphalt. Core civic staffing was ninety-two point thirty-three percent as of September first, which is up from eighty-nine point eighty-nine percent in July. The inshore reef placement, staff are currently working to secure the remaining funds needed for permitting and design, and working on preparing the solicitation documents for once that funding is available. Offshore reef enhancement, the contractor did provide us with a start date, although I think there may have been an adjustment to that, of around the twenty-second of September. So I will get a verification from aquatics before the next meeting, and let you guys know how that's going. The landfill's new citizen service areas pre-construction, the team at Solid Waste has drafted an exchange agreement, and been going back and forth with DEP and County Legal on that item, so we're making some progress there. The next step, once we get that draft, as we would like it to be, is to finalize the agreement with the state. I have added two additional projects, which you have not had on this list prior, at the request of the commission and Mr. Howard. One of those items is the Target for Action, which is the Barge Canal Boat Ramp. This one is being tracked currently on our Targets for Action on our website, so this is something that people can come to look for. On our website, the only item that is not currently on either is this Fort Island Trail Park Boat Ramp Expansion, so I will be adding that to our outstanding commission items list moving forward. So Barge Canal, I'll continue to update, although it'll be on a separate page, and the Fort Island Trail Park Boat Ramp Expansion will be on the outstanding commission items page. And for the Barge Canal project, we are currently working on an internal meeting, we just got that scheduled for the first week in October, to discuss the timeline, which is a little tight, and the next steps to make sure that we're able to complete that. And then we have the Fort Island Boat Ramp, which we are identifying potential fund, uh, funding sources for, and we will be bringing back, Community Services will be bringing back an overview of that project for formal board direction on the scope and next steps. The last time it was discussed, we had a partnership with the City of Crystal River, their circumstances have changed somewhat, and so we just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page before moving forward. And then finally, I have an additional update from Growth Management, Mr. Landon is here to speak to it if you have any questions, but they are currently working to develop an accelerator program. This will be a budget-neutral solution to provide better customer service to applicants who come to Growth Management with larger-scale projects at no additional cost to the taxpayer. So we'll be excited to let you know how that moves along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Mr. Howard, do you have anything?
Just one thing, I want to do a shout out to staff, that FEMA approved our LMS plan for Citrus County, and really the importance of the LMS Working Group, and Ms. Amy Bidwell as well, and that's going to open up opportunities for grants, so that's a big win for Citrus County, a lot, a lot of work over a long period of time, so I want to congratulate Team Citrus for another big win, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving on, Advisory Board nominations and appointments. The, except resignation of one alternate member from the Code Review and Appeals Board, Linda Cretlin is, has resigned, and I guess at some point we'll, they'll bring forward for an alternate. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, ma'am. I mentioned earlier already about Senate Bill one eighty at the Florida Association of Counties last week with our committee meetings. I also said something during the fertilizer ordinance, and I'm sorry Michael left, but just let him know what I said about this. I'm very disturbed about the Lower With Lakouchi's algae blooms, and it jumped up to Lake Rousseau as well. So I did a walk-on in our legislative retreat with the five of us, where I said, can we please ask the state and/or the feds, whoever can fix this, someone needs to fix it, not a financial ask, but for them to please get serious about it. There's been multiple studies and surveys and, you know, suggested fixes, you know, stemming back to at least two thousand and four SWFMD study. And during that, or with that study, they had three different fixes, they decided on option four, which was do nothing. Then WAR with Lakouchi Aquatic Restoration put forward, I believe, a private study that they funded that had two additional fixes. So I've been doing a bit of a deep dive into this, and Levy County is an obvious county to partner with. If we fix the water flows, it would also help Rainbow Springs and Rainbow River, so I looped Marion in as well. So while we were all together last week as commissioners, I met with two commissioners from Levy separately, of course, one is the chair, and then one of the members of the board, and I met with three commissioners, again separately with, from Marion County. And we've all agreed, those five commissioners, two and three, not their boards, I have to emphasize, not their boards, that we will stay in touch and figure out what next steps may be. There is some, there's a situation on the opposite end of the, across Florida Barge Canal, over with Rodman Dam, that got shut down because of the fantastic fishing there. We certainly don't want to destroy fishing in Lake Rousseau, so there's always the law of unintended consequences, and there is absolutely nothing simple in environmental restoration or government. So please no one freak out, because I am fully aware of the importance of fishing and, and of lake levels and all of that good stuff. However, there may be some reasonable half-steps to take that would make everyone happy, and the job one is certainly not my job, because I am not an environmental expert nor engineer, but there are minds that need to look into this. I believe there's some problems with our structures, whether it's the lock or the dam, locks or the dam, that are leaking and causing some of these issues. So we're all going to stay in touch, the three counties, and hopefully we'll get some sort of traction with either the feds or the state in looking at this and taking it seriously, because I refuse to accept the, that the Lower With Lakouchi has to be the sacrificial, sacrificial lamb. There's got to be, with human ingenuity, there has to be an answer that can restore that, as well as keep healthy lakes with fish. So, that's all I got, that's enough, thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yep, I have nothing.
Commissioner Barrett?
I also went to the FAC convention, and we spent almost an entire day driving around the city in Gainesville, which was really, really nice. And I got to experience all the different tourism, things that the, the city has, has to offer, that the county and the city have come together to get funding for. And then when we started asking dollars, one building was thirty million, and that was only one place. And they are a huge county. They have lots of money, lots of people, lots of resources. And when I try to compare that with Citrus County, it's almost impossible. You know, they had this beautiful complex for, they call Celebration Point, where they have the indoor sports, and when I saw how much it was going to cost for that type of facility, it will take hundreds of years before Citrus County could afford it. But it was really nice to see it, and, you know, we are growing in population, we are growing in, you know, people coming here, and I thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to go to these conventions and meet with these other commissioners, and learn what's going on in the other, other areas in our counties throughout the state, because we do need to, to see what's going on with the other counties and what they're able to do in order to figure out what we can do, what we can't do. And there were other things that I was going to talk to with the administrator about looking into, because they also had people there selling their products, but those are talks that I want to, you know, do one-on-one and see, you know, maybe we could get something here, get something there, maybe not. But that's what is so important about allowing the commissioners the opportunity to go to these conventions, and I, I do appreciate the fact that we are allowed to go to these conventions and learn. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I just want to say, if the community hasn't heard, I am going to publicly say thank you to the Citrus High School varsity football team. In case anyone has missed it, the news came actually to us from Ocala, they played a, a team up there, West Point, and one of the other players on the, on the Ocala team was injured, and every one of our players, not thinking about a win, not thinking about themselves, lined up, took a knee, and started praying for the well-being of the opposite, or the, the team player on the opposite team. So a huge shout out to parents, teachers, coaches, that are mentoring these students and teaching them in the right way. Thank you to you fine young people, making all of Citrus County look good, so publicly, thank you.
Very nice.
I hadn't heard that, that's, that is amazing.
That's great. Well, I think it's in times of crisis, much like Sunday, that our community rallied and came together to celebrate the life of Corporal Andy Lahara, and it was a very moving, touching service of those who were not able to attend. It does show a time when your community comes together, and how you can uplift one another in moments that you're at your lowest point. So prayers to the Lahara family. I know it'll be a tough go for a few weeks for them in going forward in their life, but with the love and support of a community, they'll make it through. I too attended FAC, what, what this particular FAC commission is designed for at this time of year, it's where all sixty-seven counties come together, we do policy advocacy for how we can come together as sixty-seven counties and decide on what we think we want to pass forward to the legislature to advocate on every county's behalf. So that's where we discussed multiple areas that will be presented for final policies that we will present at, to the legislature for in twenty-twenty-six. I'm, God, I can't even believe it's twenty-six. I, I thought as a kid when I was growing up, by twenty-twenty-five, we'd be like the Jetsons flying around.
We're almost there.
Phew, yeah, yeah. So, all right. So, all right. Ms. Lynn, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
All right. Last open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward. All right. Oh, oh.
Stop being in the back row. I would like to comment again on the library situation and book page and the interlibrary system that we have. We used to be able to call for books. As I say, my wife goes online and asks for books that she's interested in reading. She does not like Kindles, she doesn't like reading anything online. There's something about reading with papers in front of you. And there's a lot of people in Citrus County that want the books. The interloan library allows us to get something from Marion County that we may not have here. So we don't have to buy the books in addition to what other countries, other counties are doing. When we went there the other day to pick up our books, we saw the signs saying there's no more interlibrary. We can order from within Citrus County, but we can't go outside. And I have to assume at this point that that is because you can't control what books come into Citrus County. Now, for my wife, who is 75 years old, not to be able to order a book, even if it's on gay and lesbian issues, which I assure you it is not, we're beyond that. But basically, and I have to say that, you know, when I was growing up, we had no books on gay and lesbian lifestyle. And look at me anyway. So it's not the determining factor. But basically, people want to read books. They want the paper in front of them and the book page allows them because again, I know a lot of senior citizens that don't have internet access at home. They don't want to go to the library and say, now what do I want to get? They want to order it online and they want to be able to go in and pick it up and bring it home and read the paper version of it. That's what book pages allows. Whether we have to pay for it, we talk about it being free. It's not free if it's online, you don't have internet at home. And I can tell you so many, I know a half dozen ladies right now that have to go into the library in order to do internet. But if they can order from home or bring the book in and know what they want immediately, it makes a difference. So there are a lot of people that do not want internet or digitized books. They want to be able to hold the book in their hand and they want a wide variety of books to look at. So all I can say is, you know, the book page really is important to those of us who use the library. And that's a big determination. If you don't have a library card, you shouldn't have a whole lot of say about what books come into the library. It should be the library card holders. And I will say to anyone, I'll show you mine if you show me yours. I have my library card and I doubt that a lot of people sitting in this room or talking about the library services actually have library cards. And I think that we need to put this to rest and stop allowing a certain category of people to malign the gays and lesbians and transgenders that are already living here and paying taxes. In view of, I think it was Commissioner Bays that asked, I don't know anyone who wants to pay property taxes. I do. I believe in the services that we get, and I think the only way to do that is through property ownership, and we've done this for generations. So yes, I will pay for the services that I need here. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have her name for the record? Can we get your, come back to the mic and just put your name on the record?
Thank you.
Deb Spence, Crystal River.
Thank you. Next, please.
Again, my name is Ray Brown, living in Hova Sasa. I'd like to address something that, you know, we talk about money for repaving roads. I live on a private road. None of my money goes, I mean, yes, for the main roads and everything, but as it comes to neighborhoods, I have no roads. In fact, we can't even get a fire truck or an ambulance to come down some of our roads. Now, they're supposed to be maintained by the people that have sold the property. And I don't know how we can come together and, and, you know, do something to help people like myself who lives on a private road. When I, when I moved there, I did not realize that we had to maintain our own roads. And so I've got a tractor, you know, I can help some of our neighbors, but we can't even get fire trucks or ambulance down some of our roads. I don't know if there's something that can be done or we can hold these people accountable to, you know, that have sold these, this property or these pieces of land and said that, you know, that they're supposed to maintain it. But it's something that I'd like to talk to the board about and seeing if there's some way that, you know, we can be, you know, help with our roads. And so that is something that I'd like to, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I would like to speak with Mrs. Bays, Mr. Cannard, in fact, all of you commissioners, and just see, is there something that can be done to help us? Because like I said, it is, some of it is a matter of life or death. Thank you again for being here. Appreciate you guys.
And Mr. Brown, I've asked Mitch, the Assistant Public Works Director, to get with you, to get your information and to get some more information.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all hearing us out.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Mr. Brown. I don't, I'm not sure what part of Homa Sasa you live in, but I'm actually having a meeting next week with a certain community. I don't know if you fall in that, who is telling me that that community all wants to possibly have an MSBU to take care of the roads. They're looking at options, might not be paving, maybe maintenance, but the gentleman in the back can, can give you more information on that. But if your community is in agreement or people on your roads in agreement, there could be some help available. You're welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
One other quick note, Mr. Brown, before you depart. 100% agree with you that you paying for residential road resurfacing on your ad valorem taxes is not fair. So Commissioner Bays and I both brought it up here multiple times. I think there's some other commissioners that may be in favor of that, is trying to move to an MSBU situation for those that have paved roads and take it off the ad valorem taxes. Because we also have private neighborhoods, like your Black Diamond, your Terra Vista, that are gated. They have to pay for their own roads, you have to pay for your own roads, but both, both of those ends, sand roads and gated communities are both paying for residential roads for everyone else, like me, who's not sand and not gated, right? So it's not fair. So as we change and grow, we've got to figure out a fair way to change to some other funding mechanism. We're on it. I personally agree with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you hearing us out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bays.
Please.
This Susan Nelson Sala Gardens. Could you explain to, is the interlibrary loan within the county? And when you talk about shutting that down, is that the vehicle, that they're not going to have the vehicle to do that?
I don't think that's what it means, but we can get, as soon as we're done here, we'll get Eric to maybe answer that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, ma'am, could we get your name for the record? Ma'am. Yes, the clerk didn't get it.
Susan Nelson Sala Gardens.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? If not, we're going to close open to the public. Commissioner Barrick.
Okay. I don't know about anybody else, but I had interlocal with Marion County. And I got notified about two months ago that interlocal for me was going to be ending. In other words, I have a library card that I use in Ocala area, you know, I go over to Dunellen and stuff and get books. And our library card is usable over in Ocala with no problem. And I was told ours, that was going to be stopping. So I'm not sure if that's the only interlocal that's stopping, but I did know that was coming up personally. And I think that it's not just the library user, it has to be library users, not just library card holders.
I think Eric's going to address that.
Okay, so, so the thing is, it was library card holders. That doesn't matter. You've got to be a user of the library. Okay? And the last one I had was the private roads. I am not in agreement with Commissioner Davis. To get to your private road, whatever area it is in Citrus County, you have to use regular roads. And in order to maintain the regular roads, the county roads, you've got to pay the property taxes. And that's the only way that all the roads, not the private roads, but all of the county roads will ever get maintained. So when people say that they're not, they shouldn't be paying proper, you know, road taxes for residential roads because they have a private road, how did they get to that private road? They had to drive on county roads. And the only way county roads are maintained are through property taxes. And that's, that's my feelings and that's exactly how it's done. So I let Mr. Head explain something more about the libraries because he probably has it on top better than I do.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board. Eric Head, Community Services Director. Basically, there's, there's three things we're talking about, so they're getting mixed together a little bit. Reciprocal borrowing, which I think is what Commissioner Barrick was referring to, is we have individual agreements with, in a regional agreement with our neighboring counties, Marion, Levy, Sumter, Hillsborough, I mean, not Hillsborough, excuse me, but actually, yes. It's about 13, I believe. I haven't looked at it recently, but there's about 13 counties in the Tampa Bay region where if you, you can get a library card at that location without having to pay a non-resident fee. So you can use inner, you know, when you're there. We don't literally move the materials between branches, but say, if you're in Hernando, if you live in Floral City, you may want to use a Hernando library. If you live in Dunellen, you may want to use a Marion County library, that sort of thing. The second one that I think was just brought up by the citizen was, that's intercounty, that's our, our libraries, our five libraries. We have a courier that runs five days a week, that doesn't change. You can borrow from any of our five libraries and have those materials delivered, probably usually within a day or two, at another building. So you can borrow at one, return to another, it all works seamlessly. The one that's going away, and you'll see that from other libraries as well, is interlibrary loan. Interlibrary loan's been around, since I was a kid, it's been around a long time. Always been funded through federal dollars and through the Institute of Museum and Library Services. That funding, that, that agency's been reorganized and a lot of the funding was reduced. So when that federal funding stopped flowing, it's passed through from the state, through the state library, that program's being basically eliminated. So that's why you'll see other counties, even if we were to try to fund that on our own, a lot of libraries that aren't participating, we wouldn't have the network of libraries working together that existed when you had that, all of the libraries in Florida being funded through that Institute of Museum and Library Services grant.
Thank you. Board members, do you have anything else? If not, we are going to recess until 5:01. If not, we are going to recess until 5:01.
Going to reconvene our meeting, that'll be our final budget meeting for 25, 26. And to get the evening started, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Tammy Wilson.
Good evening. The purpose of the final budget hearing is for the Board of County Commissioners to amend the adopted tentative budget as it sees fit, adopt a resolution stating the millage rates to be levied, and to adopt a final budget. First order, the first substantial substantive issue discussed shall be the percentage change in millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget. The current year aggregate rollback rate is 8.4502. The current year proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8733. This is a percent change in the millage rate over the rollback rate of 5.01%. Now you're to take a comment.
So, the way this is going to work, we're going to open it up to the public, and then after that, the Board will take the meeting back over, and then we will be voting on each of the millages separately. But as the Chair of the Board, I wanted to make some opening remarks tonight on the budget. As we gather for this final budget hearing, I want to begin by thanking my fellow Commissioners, our staff, and the citizens who have participated in the process. Budgets are never just about numbers, they are priorities, values, and the future we build together for Citrus County. I want to acknowledge the burden that taxes place on our residents, none of us take that lightly, but taxes are not simply a cost, they're reinvestment into our community. They fund the deputies who keep us safe, the roads we drive on, the libraries our children learn in, the fire stations that respond when we need them at most. At the same time, we must also be honest, the budget does not resolve our long-range capital funding needs. Every year, we defer capital investments, and we fail to, we fall further behind, and the price tag only grows. As we discussed earlier in our meeting today, we know that we have $1 billion of unmet road expansion needs, we have a $300 million backlog of residential road resurfacing, we have not reinvested in our parks, our fire stations were built for volunteers, and our judicial facilities are already over capacity. These are not wants, they are needs, and the needs that grow more expensive the longer we delay. Every dollar we responsibly set aside today helps us avoid far greater costs tomorrow. As the Chair, I believe the most important message we can send tonight is one of unity. A unanimous vote on this budget tells our citizens that while we may not agree on every detail, we are united in our responsibilities to protect the future of Citrus County. It shows that we are serious about financial prudence, about planning ahead, and about making the tough choices that leadership requires. So tonight, I ask my colleagues, let's stand together, let's show our citizens that we're not divided, but united in building a stronger and safer and more financially secure Citrus County. This budget is not perfect, no budget ever is, but it is responsible, it is forward-looking, and it's in the best path forward for our community. Again, nobody wants to tax, nobody feels like this is something we want to go out and do, but we know that we have addressed the financial capital needs that are needed to secure a better future for Citrus County. We know that DOGE is coming, it is here, there's other ways that are being looked at by the legislature on how we're going to move forward in the future, but this is what, the process that we have to deal with tonight, and I'm asking for everybody's support, and I hope that we can move forward and process this budget. As I said earlier today, we borrowed $5 million, we didn't borrow, we took $5 million out of other funding so that we could stay afloat with what we had promised on road resurfacing. We are not afforded that in the years going forward. I don't know where that money's going to come from, how we're going to do it, but we have to be honest with each other, and if there's one thing I'm always going to be, it's I'm going to tell you the truth, I'm not going to tell you that we can do something that we can't. So, that's where we're at, and we are now going to open this up to the public, so anyone wishing to address the Board on the budget, please come forward.
My name is John Saroy, and I live off of West Norville Bryant Highway, just moved here about six months ago. I just have a question, Ms. Baze, you had said that DOGE is coming, do you have any timeline on when they're coming?
They've asked us for some information, it's been provided back to the state, and as of now, they have not responded with anything that they want further from the county.
Okay. And what about, what if they, or when they do come, if they have some good ideas, are you guys all willing and on board to follow what they're going to go with?
If you've ever paid any attention, it's something that, when I served as a Commissioner previously, and since I've been re-elected back to this Board, I've always thought that we needed to have budget reform, and I think that's exactly kind of what the state is looking at, and I'm happy to work alongside the legislature to come up with what we can do that's a fair and responsible budget process.
All right, great, thank you.
I feel like unless that there are changes to this budget, that you should not all vote for it, because at least, you know, it'll mean that you're on the side of the taxpayer, because I think there were a number of opportunities that could have been taken to cut the budget, specifically in the area of not only health, but the library, which was requested at the last meeting, and the fact of the matter is, is that there is a lot of room there for cutting. You know, we're spending over $300,000 just to purchase books, which we know that means 1,300 books a month are coming into the library system. Clearly, a lot of them are garbage, and that could have been cut without even touching the reserves. So, and I feel like the, also removing the book page from the library item, from the library budget is very important. Now, I think that that came up, I understand, from the earlier meeting today, and it was mentioned that a lot of people, they need that book page because they don't have internet. Well, you know, the libraries have free computers that you can go on and read them there at the library, so that's a fallacious argument. What that's really there for is to push a specific agenda. You saw, there was an LGBT person that came and said, "We need this book." That's there to push an agenda, because the magazine is available for anybody to come into the library and check it out on the computer, or they can read it at home. It's a free item, but it's a magazine that's not at all balanced, and I've sent you all an email showing how completely unbalanced it is. It pushes the LGBT agenda very strongly, it pushes a CRT agenda very strongly, it repeatedly says that, you know, Trump is some kind of authoritarian, it never gives the other side of that, it's all, Trump is an authoritarian, and of course, the witchcraft agenda is also pushed very strongly. And we know, since the last meeting, we know now that the Charlie Kirk killer, not a transgender himself, was clearly LGBT and dating a transgender, and this is an agenda that's continuously pushed in this magazine. You never see the other side, and there's a lot of books that are written about the dangers of transgenderism, and, you know, converting kids, putting kids on these drugs and turning them into maniacs, which we've seen repeatedly now, of all the, you know, the Catholic school shooting, and now the Kirk shooting, all involving the transgender community. So, we're asking you to please go ahead and change that line item at least, you know, maybe look at doing the rollback rate for the library budget. But anyway, if it's not going to happen, then I would suggest to the two members that voted no last time to also please vote no this time, thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, how are you? I think this needs to be said, I'm a library rat. I don't go into all of the sections because I'm an adult.
Could you pull the mic down? Huh? I don't know if you stated your name.
Oh, Donna Romo.
And could you pull the mic down just so it gets captured? Thank you.
Okay. If the Library Board is so concerned about children's inherent rights and feelings, I think they're discriminating. We better go full monty. There are kids and some adults that may be disturbed and feel lonely because of their alternate ideations and attractions. The DSM manual will explain it. Don't these people need validation too? I'm against child abuse, I don't have children, and I know families have to deal with their own situations. That said, do what you must do, but leave us out of it and stay out of our pockets. Thank you.
Deb Spence, Crystal River. Who knew I'd be able to speak three times today? But as long as library issues come up, then I will be here and I will talk about them. As I mentioned at the earlier meeting, I have been lesbian for around 50 years, just turned 70 last week. There were no books in the library that told me about being a lesbian, there was nothing to tell me it was right or wrong, all I had was church people to say it was wrong. But I stand before you now as a proud citizen of Citrus County, someone who's very involved in the county, and I'm not a one-trick pony that only knows one thing. As far as Charlie Kirk and transgender, it's interesting, he is not, the shooter is not transgender, his roommate was, but let's make it an issue, because you know somebody who's transgendered. We need to get beyond this, we need to look at our citizens and who upholds this community. Do we want to be a community that brings people down? I keep hearing Christ and Christianity discussed. Jesus said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Jesus said, "Feed my sheep." I don't see how any of these library discussions have anything to do with either one of those. When I look through the sexual assault people within Citrus County, I don't see any of them that are gay. They're all white, straight men. They're family members. So, looking at the library as being the one big problem here, it doesn't exist. When I went to pick up the book page at the library, as I told you earlier, I had to ask for it, it was on the back counter. This is not something that kids go in and pick up. It's not available to them, and they wouldn't want to read this anyway, it's boring as hell, unless you like to read books, as we do. So I really ask you to stop some of this nonsense, and you can do this very easily, by sitting there, as Inverness City Council did years ago, when it was brought up about witches and warlocks in this county and how bad it was, to sit there and say, "I appreciate your First Amendment rights to say it, but I don't agree with you." And it's about time this Board stood up for the people in this community that don't believe in singling people out and in making them all bad people and bringing out books and everything else that makes people separate and bad. When I was growing up, I'm the only left-handed person that was allowed to be left-handed because it was evil, and everybody talked against it. Now I can stand here proudly a left-handed lesbian and sit there and say that all of the negativity does not deserve to be put on people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Board?
Commissioners, Robin Orlandi, here I am again. I just want to say, as I did earlier, please support the library budget as it's been stated. In a growing community, in this economically challenging time, we need to fully fund those services, both for our residents and for the newcomers that our development will bring into the community. As that young mother said earlier, it's parents' responsibility to review their children's reading, to be with them when they read, it's not self-appointed community censor's job to make reading decisions for the rest of us, children, adults, families. And again, this dividing of the community between, oh, LGBTQ and straight, you know, this and that. I mean, Charlie Kirk's wife actually said, "Love one another, that's the first rule, I forgive him," but instead, we're still hearing this, like, "These people are evil, these people are bad, and what we really need to do is come together, try to find common ground, figure out how to afford everything, and build a better community." And again, this argument about paper books versus electronic items, yes, libraries do have computers, and they're wonderful, our system is very strong in that regard and has lots of great programs, but it still costs people money to get to the library. If you take a paper book home, or you take book pages home, and you're living in your little, you know, in Beverly Hills in this house you bought 20 years ago that was very economically affordable, and you don't have internet at home, or you don't like internet, you still can read that book, you can read it to your grandchildren, you can look at book pages or any other magazine. One of the great free features of our libraries is the magazine exchange. I bring all my extras in, you put them there, you can pick up other interesting ones, that's a great idea. So again, with growth, we're going to be serving a community of more highly skilled people that are hopefully going to be earning higher wages, their demands are going to be different on our libraries than the people that are in lower economic situations, that are maybe working, you know, both parents working, everybody's working, their hourly wage just isn't high enough, they need a different kind of library service. So I would beg you, please support all those needs together, and thank you very much for hearing me out yet again today, and for your service to our community, much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Renee Bedford, Phyllis City, Florida. I just have one demand, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the residents here. Stop for a minute when you make decisions and think about our side. Yes, I know your side, you got all these state demands, these, what you have to handle. Right now, we're being taxed out of our homes, sad but true, and I'm asking each and every one of you, when I come up here, it's not a personal attack on y'all, it's just y'all are representatives, and this is the forum to do it. Can't you just take a minute and just find a way, cut us a break? We've been working our whole freaking lives, we're working sunup to sundown, and we're still in debt, still having to pay, 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 pay. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Tracy Duncan of Leganto. Hi, Tracy Duncan of Leganto. I just have concerns with the increase of property taxes because there's, in my opinion, there's a lot of disagreement in how it should be spent and what it should be spent on. So I think it's unfair for us to have to continue paying more and more taxes when we see a lot of the spending not going towards areas we feel that is essential or that is important, really, you know. There's been a lot of things sought out recently, you know. I'm still against the animal shelter. I'm still against this aspire, I'm sorry, I pronounced it wrong. That's major bucks right there in those two things that, in my opinion, could be reallocated for what we need now, as far as, you know, you keep talking about roads and, and all this kind of stuff. We do need roads and stuff, but there's things we don't need that we're paying for. I'd like more clarity on this millage tax, you know, what is it honestly going to be going for? Are we going to have more say on what our taxes are going to be spent on? I kind of feel honestly, if y'all can't come in agreement as, you know, like a five-to-o vote, that we should be able to have voting, you know, go-to voting. I've heard of this survey that was recently done. I had no idea about a survey being done. I, many people I talked to didn't realize there's any kind of survey about this tax going on. So how is that a fair outlook on this possible raise in taxes if a lot of the community didn't even know about this survey? I honestly had no knowledge of it. Anybody in my neighborhood had no knowledge of it. So my main concern is, I know we have taxes that we need to pay. I don't agree with having to pay growth tax because I think those people coming in and those developers building all that, I think they should have to pay the growth tax, you know, all the things that are increasing. We've been maintaining well as a county for many years. Before I moved here, this county was maintaining well. I was lucky enough to find a, you know, a house that was already there, so I didn't have to, I didn't want to buy a new house and tear down trees and, you know, that sort of thing. I'm very much conservative of our lands and branches and woods and so forth as that. But my concern is, is I've seen a lot of spending going on, in my opinion, that is wasted. I'd like to have us as a community have more say what our money is being spent on. We're having to pay these taxes. We should have more say on what it's spent on. If our, if we don't agree with our commissioners, we should still have some type of voice to say, no, we don't want this. What can we do to protect ourselves if we're not in agreeance with what y'all are doing? We're paying this money out.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Chuck Hutterly. I live in Inverness, in the county side. My total property tax for the '24 is $2,378.68 on a $130,000 taxable value home built in 1979. I have attended all three budget hearings, including a pre-budget information meeting organized by you. A perfect opportunity to talk to one-on-one to the principals of the county. Commissioner Bays was there, fire, police, water, library, works, to try to get a handle on the county's rising cost. This explained to me in great detail what the county is facing expense-wise. Tax relief or future tax relief was not discussed. I also attended a five-year financial outlook from PFM Group Consulting. Carrying forward reserve money rolled over from previous years have been propping up the budget. Without this, Citrus County could face deficits as early as '29. It hides the fact that the county is spending more than it brings in from the regular sources. To reverse this trend, PFM recommends boost tax revenues, especially from property tax. Very incendiary language. That's a quote, and we see this action taking place. Number two, cut expenses particularly on large debt, like Sheriff's Office. Again, that's a quote. Seems like commissioners are not following this recommendation. Inspire placemaking collective consulting half a million dollars. Contract to update comp plan. I have a final budget recommendation. Going forward, and it's your property owners, need to attend all important commission meetings in person, not by email, filling commissioners in boxes or unnamed comments in the paper. Come here and let commissioners hear what you think or gather information. It's your civic duty to engage. AI is real, and someday AI may be speaking for us. It's often said, the elected commissioners are working for us. It's time that they hear from their bosses, property owners, the county's largest revenue source. We need relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Board, do you have any comments? Commissioner Finnegan?
I guess I'll go first. I feel like the majority of the work, or at least the work I wanted to see, happened at the preliminary budget meeting. Came with notes, we asked a lot of questions, department heads came up one by one. In my recollection, it was hours. They did what I thought would possibly be impossible, and I credit Tammy Wilson with that, to find that $8.3 million that was requested. At the tentative budget hearing, we learned that we could have that $8.3 million back to, because the majority was taken out of the road resurfacing, which the people need. So it was either increase taxes or find it in the budget. And we all said, find it in the budget, and it happened. At the tentative budget meeting, in line with that, not hurting the budgets of the library or the health department, I suggested rollback rate. It was mentioned that that wouldn't save the taxpayer a lot of money, albeit it would save them some money. You know, I, I kind of asked some trusted people, and as you stated, Madam Chair, in the beginning, you know, we, we want to approve this together and we want to all get along. And I would like to do that. And I know when we voted line by line, which we'll probably do tonight, some of them, we will all get along. But here's, here's my point of not hurting those two budgets. It looks like they're being singled out, and they're not, because every department was looked at in the very same way. The sheriff's office, albeit our constitutional officers needed a little extra money, special election this year, I see the supervisor of elections, so we understood she needed that bump, not by her fault, not because of her budget, just because we have a special election. The sheriff needed a little more money, albeit I look at it as a cut, because what was it, like 80 million requested last year? And he, he didn't do that. He, he really looked, he, he found money for body worn cameras. Everybody was told, we want to maintain the millage, but even better if we could roll it back. We couldn't roll it back. And I understand that, as far as the main budget, because we have all the constitutionals in that budget, but we held the line, and I appreciate that. So when, when talking to people and even in prayer, you know, it'd be easier for the little bit of money just to say, okay, the board outvoted me, if you will, last time. But I was reminded by every single person, if you don't have the conviction to stand up for even a little bit, what hope do the rest of us have? So I'm going to hold the line on those two, reminding everybody, this does not hurt the budgets of anyone. It takes some out of a reserve. Now, if something happened, they use that reserves, but if they don't use it, it's not like they're stockpiling this money for something. It rolls back into the budget. It's a good faith effort to the taxpayer, and here's why I tell you, even if it's a little, a little bit of money this year, if we don't do it, this is what happens with government, right? Inflated budgets. If we don't save that little bit of money this year, next year, my guess, we don't roll back anything again. And there's no really extra expenses in, in certain departments, so we just let everyone to the line. More in the budget, more in the budget. And it's just a little bit each time, but five years down the road, the taxpayers making comments, we're being taxed out of our home. Why? Because it's small and incremental. Even though we're holding the line on the majority of the millage, we did increase the fire fee. Some people say, well, that was only $46. To some people, not to all people, some people it went up greatly. It's these little bits. That's why I pointed out, even with the library, and again, I, I'm not saying anything against them. It's, I want them to maintain their good, healthy budget and keep all the programs that they're offering, and they can do that if we roll back the millage. It's just, in, in maybe three years' time, their budget increased like a million dollars. So the taxpayers understand that. We understand, we, some years, they, they didn't like it. The board, passports voted for a higher tax increase. And they understand sometimes, for the services that they want, we have to hold the line. But other times, what they don't understand, even if it's $1, even if it's $2, they don't understand why. It's just easy to say, oh, well, we don't need to roll back, we'll just, you know, give them the extra for the budget, because it's just a little bit of money. A little bit of money, over time, in, in different millage rates, over a span of different departments, adds up. So I'm going to stick with what I recommended at the tentative budget hearing because it hurts no one. It, it cancels no programs. It takes away nothing. And if it does save the taxpayer even a minimal amount, that, if we save the minimal amounts every year, what, look at the difference five years from now or 10 years from now. So that's where I stand. There's a lot of talk about book page. I was happy to take it out, and I'm still happy to take it out. Again, I don't necessarily think at that point, we, with my suggestion of rollback, take that out and roll it back more. I think that the library can find a much better use for that money. I'll restate, I find it odd that authors pay to be in a subscription and then we have to pay for it. Could you imagine if we did that with their own businesses? I'll go to my own business and I'm going to make up an advertisement, I'm going to give it to you and you can pay me for it. So maybe I'm missing something, right? Maybe that's a good idea. But I respect what everyone's opinions on that, and I understand where you're coming from with even in the reserves, but I'm going to hold tight with where I was at the tentative budget hearing. And I, I hope, even if you disagree, that you all could at least respect that. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I also agree with Commissioner Finnegan. Okay, there were cuts, and I have to say that, I was very happy that there were cuts. But then I was, then I started listening about what the cuts, there really weren't that many, because then I was also told, the roads money is a one-time thing to get it up to the 16.9. So what kind of cuts were there really? Okay? As for growth, we have growth. We've been having more people come online. And yes, for those people who don't understand, the house doesn't come online immediately. It takes almost a year and a half before us to get it onto the tax rolls. But they are coming on. They are going to be paying, okay? So we do have extra money coming in that we didn't have. So that's what frustrated me with the fact that, you know, they say cuts, but there really weren't as many cuts as, as it says. Now, I, the sheriff, I know he wants 5.5 whatever percent. And we need to have the sheriff's officers. That's a, that's a need. But I also know that anybody my age, or anybody 62 or above, when it comes to the COLA, is only going to get 2.5%, because that's what the government's going to give us, 2.5%. And Governor DeSantis, he's only giving state workers 2%, as opposed to, we're looking at 5% for the county. Where are, where are our citizens going to get that other 2.5%? Believe me, there is inflation. My prescription plan, I got a thing in the mail. I don't know how many of you got yours last week, but I got mine. It's going to go from $48 a month to $98 a month. Okay? That jumps it up to $1,200 a year, and that doesn't pay my prescriptions. That's my plan to get a cheaper price. And I know a lot of other people got, have the same plan that I have, and they were commenting on the fact that they're going to have to drop that plan, and I'm going to have to drop that plan, because I can't see $1,200 a year to pay for it. But to ask the citizens to pay, you know, more than the rollback, the rollback should be sufficient for the county, at least for this year. We're going to still give the sheriff his 5%. We're still going to take care of the fire department, which is very, very important. Anybody that has a house or lives in a house, you know that you have to have fire protection. So I am going to agree, I'm not going to vote for this, I'm going to vote for the rollback.
Commissioner Kennard, do you have anything?
Just briefly, with this budget, our reserves are at 16% or very close to that, which is a healthy number for a county our size. That leaves us with 50, roughly 53 days of funding in the event of a natural disaster, economic disaster, whatever it might be. We're in very good shape with our reserves. Our bond rating is a double A, which is excellent for a county our size. Is there some fat in this budget? I'm sure there is. I don't think there's much there. A, a quick Google search, you'll have to dig very far to find out, that Citrus County consistently ranks, year in and year out, near the bottom of all 67 counties in the state for the tax burden on our residents. This year, what I found is we're at 52. So we're, we're not at 67, we're not at the very bottom, but we're at 52. Nationwide, we're around number 900 out of almost 3,400 counties. I hate paying taxes, as much as any of you do. I have a monstrous tax bill that I hate to pay every year, but that's part of it. Sitting up here on this board now for nine years, I've gone through this many times, when you meet with directors, when we meet with the county administrator, and try and cut absolutely everywhere that we can. It's a painful process, but we know the, the services that the county wants, that we've, we've got to deliver and the cost that comes with that. You know, when we, when we had our, our fire tax meeting, MSBU meeting, what we heard from by far the majority of the people in the room was, we want these increased services. We want more firefighters. We want the equipment to be, you know, in functioning order when it's my emergency. I want them to be able to get there, and I want all these firefighters there, but I don't want to pay for it. Or the message was, I want all this stuff, but go find the money someplace else. The people that are, that are advocates for the library, they want the budgets for the library. And you got other people saying, no, don't, don't fund it as what they're asking for. So we sit up here and we, we listen to both sides of it. Ultimately, it is this board's responsibility to look, what's, what the county needs to deliver, what the cost of that is, and try and deliver those services, those necessary services to the community at the lowest possible price. You may not agree with it, but number 52 out of 67, we're doing a pretty good job of delivering it at the lowest possible price that we can.
Commissioner Davis, did you have anything?
Ditto. Commissioner Kennard?
I guess my comments would be that we're going to get through this budget cycle, but come November 1, I invite every citizen, I want to sit down with you, I want to go through this budget, I want you to be a part of the process. I'm here to listen to you. Tell me where to cut. Tell me where to cut, but still deliver the service. If we're going to collect $143 million in property taxes, $51.6 million of it goes to state unfunded mandates. That comes right off the top. Then we're going to fund every constitutional officer. We're required to fund constitutional officers. Every building that you see that we provide services out of, we, the Board of County Commissioner pays for those. So every constitutional officer, everything, everything that you see, every constitutional officer have, including the B O C C, we fund all of that. If you add the public safety into it, what we collect in ad valorem doesn't cover all of the expenses. We start then taking out of fines and forfeitures and intergovernmental revenues. So the ad valorem literally does not cover all of the expenses. I'm not telling you I like it. I don't like paying taxes. I know several of us up here, we have, we have commercial real estate taxes that we pay, and those are, can be very hefty. But I, I'm inviting you, I want to sit down, I want to go through this budget, line by line with you, and where you, if you've got the answers on telling us how to, to do this, I'm all ears, because I don't want to do it either. It's not anything that I like. But I can tell you, every year that, if I went back 10 years, and what we haven't put towards maintaining capital and the infrastructure, like road resurfacing and, and putting monies away for the capital expenses, we're losing ground, because every year that we fail to do that, we're adding a 3% inflation on top of it. I don't think there's a, at this point, to belabor the point, but I do invite you. I do want you to be a part of the process, and I do want you to be educated about it, and my door is always open. So with that being said, we're going to move on. And Ms. Tammy, I am going to turn it back over to you. I believe we're going on to C, which is, accept the motion to approve a resolution amending the 2025-26 budget for adjustments. Is that correct?
Yes. So I ask you to accept the motion to approve a resolution amending the 2025-2026 budget for adjustments previously presented at the September 11, 2025 tentative budget hearing. Exhibit A, other budget modifications. Exhibit B, and the cash carryforward estimates for certain accounts. Exhibit C. These are on page three. Exhibit A is budget adjustments, page four. Exhibit B, other budget adjustments, five through 15. And Exhibit C is the cash carryforward adjustments, 16 through 20.
Do we don't have that? Commissioner Finnegan.
I just want to clarify, because it looks like we're voting for the rates individually, but it looks like this exhibit is asking for a collective rollback rate. Is that correct?
This is your approving the budget. This is not the millage rates. We are approving the budget.
Well, there's nowhere, it looks like, in this for me to make a different motion, but, so I will ask if the board is supportive of reconsidering the minor adjustments that I suggested at the tentative.
That's four motions from now. We'll be doing the, we're doing the millages. They're coming up.
Well, when you give the page numbers, it looks like in this that we're asking for the, for the complete.
Just asking you for the budget adjustments that were attached in the agenda item.
I think that's where we're a little bit.
I think I was just confused on the page numbers, because they're not, they're not numbered. And one of your pages has that in there, so.
It's in the back, it was in the booklet.
It's in the booklet, yes.
It's in the booklet, but it's not in that back.
Oh, wow.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, I don't seem to have the paperwork that you all have. I've been trying to find what you're looking at online, and I don't have it.
I mean, I was prepared, and knowing what I'm talking about, but when a motion is based on page numbers, and we don't have the page numbers.
I'm looking at it online.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am.
Exhibit A, page four.
I see.
May I?
Not yet. No, we've closed open to the public, sorry.
You want us to be involved?
Not, yeah, but we, we closed open to the public on that portion.
How do we know what exhibit A, B, and C are?
So I can help with that, now that I have the paperwork we saw in backup. So at the, at the preliminary budget hearing, I believe that you were there, you, if you remember, may I?
Yes.
Okay. There was a set budget, but while we had all the people come up and talk, I realized that how they got to, to that budget was taking $7 million out of road resurfacing, and I pointed that out. And also, there was another $1.3 million that would potentially be needed for the sheriff, for the cops grant. And it was my desire that we would fund both of those, $8.3 million, but not add to the millage, not take more for the budget. So what they did in these pages is this are, these are the line items of where they, they moved that money, so that they didn't increase the taxes. So I'm going to vote yes for this, because this is what the, our budget team did to find that 8.3 million. Good question. So with that.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can clarify something before a motion is made. There was something that was omitted from the motion, so I just wanted to make sure that you all didn't want to add that back in, authorize the chairman to execute.
You're on C?
Yes, ma'am. The motion was to approve the resolution amending the budget for adjustments presented at the 9/11 meeting. But nowhere in there did it give authorization for the chair to execute the resolution, so I just wanted to make sure you didn't want that in there.
Well, I can make a motion for C with the addition of allowing the chair to execute the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
D, we're going to ask you to accept the motion to adopt the resolution adjusting the water and wastewater connection fee rates for fiscal year 25-26.
Motion to adopt the resolution adjusting wastewater and water connection fees for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment?
Can you add to execute the resolution? I apologize.
Execute, it's not on the written part, sorry. And authorize the chairman to execute the resolution.
I have a second. I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
E, we're going to ask you to accept the motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution for water and wastewater projects for fiscal year 25-26, and to execute the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt the reimbursement schedule for water and wastewater project, reimbursement resolution for water and wastewater projects for fiscal year 25-26, and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, we will do the millages, so I'm going to ask you to accept a motion to adopt the final millage rates and approve the millage resolution authorizing the chairman to sign. I will read these one by one and ask you to vote on each one. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.4502 mils, and the proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8733 mils. Therefore, the percentage millage increase is 5.01%. I ask you to approve general fund at 6.9898 mils.
Motion to approve 6.9898 for the general fund millage.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
County transportation, 0.9860 mils.
Motion to approve the transportation millage at 0.9860.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Health Department, 0.0564 mils.
Motion to approve the Health Department millage of 0.0564.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
The Library District, 0.3147 mils.
Motion to approve the Library Services Millage Rate at 0.3147.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment?
Yes. I want to be very clear before we vote for this. I've made the comments earlier that I feel that there are, not I feel, there are multiple resources for book reviews online. I want to see us drop the subscription to Book Page, direct people to the online resources that are available to them, including Book Page online, but I am going to support the current military. Again, I'll state it for the people who weren't here earlier, there's roughly 30, only 38% of public libraries in the county, in the country, that subscribe to this Book Page. A community our size, a budget our size, we don't need to be spending money on it. I feel there are other materials where our library director and his staff can better use that money and still serve the needs of our community.
Commissioner Dave, or Barrett, I'm sorry.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner Kennard. One thing I'd like to suggest, you drop the Book Page, and then you drop the cost for our citizens for copying. Use the money for the Book Page for something that will benefit our citizens.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1.
The fire protection, which is the old district, including the city of Inverness.
But we can get a consensus on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. 0.000.
Motion to approve fire rescue taxing district at 0.000000.
I'm going to second that one. Motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1, or 5-0, sorry.
The fire MSTU for the unincorporated area, 0.5780.
Motion, may as well make it all the way through. Motion to approve fire rescue MSTU at 0.5780.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
The stormwater MSTU at 0.0000.
Motion to approve stormwater MSTU at 0.0000.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
So now I'm going to ask you to accept a motion to adopt the final budget and approve the resolution authorizing the chairman to sign, which is page 28.
Is that G?
G, yes, ma'am.
G. Motion to approve, adopt, and authorize the chairman to execute the final budget resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
H, I'm going to ask you to accept the motion to approve and authorize the staff to execute the vote record for final adoption of millage levy, DR-487V, maximum millage levy calculation final disclosure, DR-420MM, and certification of compliance, DR-487 via electronic format, which is also known as e-trim.
Need to read the whole thing again? Motion, I make a motion to approve and authorize staff to execute the vote record final adoption of millage levy, DR-487V, maximum millage levy calculation final disclosure, DR-420MM, and certification of compliance, DR-487 via electronic format e-trim.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I, I ask you to accept the motion to authorize the staff to execute the certification of final taxable value, DR-422, upon receipt via electronic format.
Make a motion to authorize staff to execute the certification of final taxable value, DR-422, upon receipt via electronic format.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
J, I ask you to accept the motion to approve the Roll Forward Grant Resolution, pages 29 through 55, and execute the resolution.
Motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the Roll Forward Grant Resolution, and what was the rest of it?
Sign the resolution.
And sign, and execute the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
K, I ask you to accept a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the sheriff regarding the sheriff's budget allocation for fiscal year 26, as approved by the county administrator and the county attorney.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the sheriff regarding the sheriff's budget allocation for fiscal year 26, as approved by the county administrator and county attorney.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
I have no other requests, Chairman.
That concludes the formation of the budget. We are adjourned.
No, oh, we have. No, there's one more.
Oh, what?
There's one more.
Did I, I'm sorry? What did I miss? T2?
T2.
I don't have T2 on mine. It's on the agenda.
Oh, we're not adjourned.
And you'll update it in five years.
I promise to be quick, okay?
Commissioner Sheriff, you'll be considering an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, modifying the Citrus County five-year capital improvement schedule, set forth in Table 12-1 of the capital improvements element of the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan as an annual update pursuant to Florida Statute 163.31773B, as described herein below, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Y'all have seen these every year. Florida statutes do require that we update the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan based on the capital improvements program that you just, just adopted. So that's what this did, does, because it's mandated every year, the state of Florida lets us do it as an ordinance in one hearing, which is why we do it immediately after the budget is adopted. So it is in your backup, and hopefully you'll approve it, because it is mandated.
Motion to approve T2.
At this time, we'll open it up to the public, anyone wishing to address this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close open to the public.
Motion to approve T2.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, and a second by Commissioner Finnegan.
Nope.
Barrett.
Barrett, okay, wasn't sure.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
T2, is that B?
A and B.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Can I adjourn now? Thank you. We're adjourned.